We'll wait, we'll just wait, sorry. Everybody's in.
Right, let's make a start. We are already running a little bit late. On the agenda, you will note that there is no terrorist or fire alarm planned for today. So if either of them go off, you all know the procedure. In the event of a fire alarm, we meet out the back or at the front. Terrorist alarm, we meet at the front and don't take anything with you. Just to remind councillors, there is a webcast running. So basically be careful what you say because you can't deny it because it will be on tape. Right, item one, apologies for absence. Chief Executive, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies for absence have been received from councillor Adams, councillor Beaver, councillor Brewis, councillor Fairman, councillor Fooks, councillor Marfleet, councillor Miss Elizabeth Ransom, councillor Mrs Reynolds and councillor Mrs Rollings.
Thank you. Declarations of members' interest. Do councillors have any interests they wish to declare? I see no hands up and no light slip. So item three, minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of May. Has anybody got any problem with them? So everybody is in favour of that? I will sign those in due course. Item four, chairman's announcements. They are all written down there. One or two things I would just like to highlight. The civic service at Uffington. First time in 43 years it's actually been moved out of Lincoln and the responses we've had have been very favourable and thank you to everybody who turned up. Councillor Tony, sorry, Dr Tony Hill, I was nearly demoting you there. It is his last meeting, full council meeting. He is leaving the authority on the 16th of next month, am I right Tony? And I'd just like to take this opportunity on behalf of the council to thank you for your work over the past three and a half years. Also, Team GB in the Olympics and Paralympics, I'd like to congratulate all the competitors who came from Lincolnshire. Not only the ones that won medals, but also the ones that competed who weren't fortunate enough to win medals. Because I don't think any of us here would ever qualify to participate in the Olympics. And the Olympic theme was, it is better, it is a competition, not the winning. That is always a foreign concept to politicians. The Lincolnshire Show, the comms team for the second year in a row, won the ransom cup for the best non-agricultural stand. It was all down to the comms team and I'm sure we'd all like to thank them for the hard work they put in. On a sadder note, I have to report the death of former councillor Larry Wells, who represented the Lincoln-Bolton Electoral Division from the first, from May 1981 to May 1993. As you're all aware, the funeral is at St Giles' Church, Lincoln, on Monday the 26th of September at 1.30. I would now ask you to stand in memory of ex-councillor Larry Wells, please. If there are any councillors here who can remember him because it was quite a long time ago, could you please press your buttons? And councillor Parker.
I'd like to say a few words about Larry Wells. As the Chair has said, we know that it's a long time since councillor Wells was a member of Lincolnshire County Council. He finished his time here in 1993, so there's not many of us around who can actually say that we knew Larry. I first met him back in the 1980s when he'd just started as a county councillor. As well though, he was also a city councillor for even longer, 12 years as a county councillor, 23 years as a city councillor, Mayor of Lincoln in 1997. So he put a lot into Lincoln in terms of public service. The connection particularly between himself and myself was that I joined the council in 1989, two years after that in 1991, annual general meeting of the Labour Group. And before that, Larry phoned up and rang me and said, have you ever thought about standing as leader of the Labour Group? And I said, no. He said, well, if you're interested, I'd be happy to put your name forward and so will some colleagues. So obviously some, should we say, discussions had taken place behind the scenes unbeknown to me and it went through smoothly as I expected it to if Larry was involved. And I became leader of the Labour Group after two years and stayed there for 23 years. So I've got in a sense a lot to thank Larry for. He was not just in...
Or not.
Or not. But that was Larry, involved in politics, involved in the community. He got elected to the St Giles area and he was the local owner of a fish and chip shop. That's as good a place as any if you want to meet people to actually get a vote, talk to them informally. And he, along with Rick Metcalf and Jerome O'Brien, held the seats between them for a long period of time. Larry was also an ex-army, the Lancers, actively involved in regimental business and also a regular attender at services. Remembering today, Battle of Britain Day. So he contributed in that way and I'm sure other people will know him as a governor of St Francis Hill School in Lincoln. So all round, this guy spent a lot of time in the community. His family were also involved in labour party activities, so in a sense that's spread further. His father, grandfather and great-grandfather and his granddaughter married Chris Burke as a son, who some of you will know as a former county councillor here. So at least our condolences go out to his family and Larry will be much missed by a lot of people and a lot of organisations in Lincoln.
Angela Newton.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I remember Larry because I joined the council when he did in 1981 and came off when he did in 1993. And we often had a chat in the Members' Room. And in those days, the council was run quite differently to it is now and have to say it's much better now. But in those days, we had a chat in the Members' Room and we each put the word to right and I remember him as a kindly man and somebody who never spoke ill of anybody else. And so I'd like to send my thoughts and condolences to his family. Thank you.
Councillor Robyn Renshaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I can say about Larry, well, he was a well-respected community person and as such, he was long, he was remembered long, well after his term of office expired because people used to come up to him in the street and ask him about community activity and about council questions. So he was well respected and that's all we can all say as councillors, we're long remembered after we pass on. Thank you.
Councillor Rosie Kirk.
I'm glad that I can stand here today to speak about Larry. I met Larry in 2010 when I joined the Labour Party. I can honestly say he's one of the most wonderful people that I've ever met. He's kind, he was passionate, he fought injustice, he told me the story of why he was like he was. Because his family were brought up in a place where the landowner controlled their family in a sense and he felt that he wanted to fight against injustice and that's what drove him. And I'm getting quite emotional because he was such a caring person and he was a shining star for the community. And I'd just like to say that he has inspired me. Thank you.
Councillor Kev Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Larry was without doubt a true gentleman. As Rob said, apart from being a Labour councillor, he also was a governor at the school, St Francis Hill School in Bootam, not Bolton. At a school meeting this week, everyone, I mean, everyone remembered Larry. If it weren't for him being at school, it was from them being little and he used to give them help. But what the main motion was that came over, that Larry gave so much time and effort to not only the school, but the pupils, whoever there was, whatever help they needed, Larry was always there. He was a real trooper, he could often be seen walking around the Socialist Republic of Bootam. He will sadly be missed and fondly remissed by everyone who knew him. Thank you.
Councillor Parker, your light is lit up up here. Is that intentional or is that a mistake? Ah, right. Councillor Martin Hill, please.
Thank you. I mean, I don't think I knew Larry, I'm not sure I ever met him. He, as I came on to the council, he was leaving. All I can say, I'd like to, on behalf of Conservative Group and the Coalition Group, share the condolences of someone. All I can say is that obviously when I came on in 93, he was, I don't think he was well respected across the political spectrum and, you know, Conservative colleagues at the time did speak well of him. And I think the other thing I would say, although I never met him, his reputation followed him and I think that is probably a good epitaph as you could have.
Thank you. Next, item nine, item five, statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Are there any updates that aren't printed on the Order of Proceedings?
If you read the Order of Proceedings, Chairman, you will see that all I'm going to do is refer members to what is stated there under section five.
Any other members of the executive? No? Right. The council just notes that, doesn't it? Yeah. All right, that is duly noted. Six, questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors and chairman of committees and subcommittees. The first question is councillor Rosie Kirk to councillor Mrs Tricia Bradwell.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm feeling a bit emotional. Government cuts have resulted in a £466 million reduction in social care budgets, representing a real terms net budget cut of 31%. The NHS Confederation said inefficient social care funding is now the most urgent threat to NHS and wider health and care system. Since 2014 in Lincolnshire, delayed transfers... I'm about to say it. Since 2014 in Lincolnshire, delayed transfers of care have more than doubled. What is Lincolnshire County Council doing to try to reduce the delays and why was this situation not avoided by investing in social care years ago? Thank you.
Oh, that's a nice, easy question. Actually, we do work very closely with the hospital. We've got 15 social workers in Lincoln who work with the discharge teams in the hospital. I recently went to see the chairman of ULHT and one of the first things he said to me when I tackled him about delayed discharges was that in ULHT at the moment, as soon as someone comes in, they should be talking about when they're going home. They don't do that. They'll very often decide an hour or two before they're in the taxi going home that they're going home. So there's a huge problem, I think, within Lincolnshire and perhaps across the country in the fact that we do need planned discharges from hospital. When you look at the split between why people are in hospital, in Lincolnshire, it is mainly health. The social care split is very, very low. I mean, for packages of care, the hospital cannot tell us two hours before somebody is to be discharged that they want home care in the next morning. You know, we need several days to do that. And likewise, if the people are going on to have respite in a nursing home whilst they recover to go back home, people need time to arrange that. So for me, one of the big issues is the fact that the planning isn't quite right in the hospitals. And as I say, we've put resources in, we've got 15 in Lincoln, we've got social workers in Boston, Peterborough, even in Kings Lynn Hospital, to try and get that much better. But to be honest, I've tried and I know Glenn, who's not here today, we've tried working more with health, but actually, you know, we're not probably doing all that we could jointly and I have to admit that. The pace of what we need to be working at at the moment, we're not getting engagement from health.
Councillor Mrs Marion Overton for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. My question relates to contracting and I would like to know if councillor Hill sees the risk in taking a lower quote without significant evidence that they can actually perform the job for the price. Soco and other biddies may assume that they can do the job for less without detailed assurance that it's actually possible. Sometimes the reason the service was failing was because it wasn't adequately funded and actually it's more that's required. Sometimes the 10% penalties may not be enough to put things right when they fail, causing significant problems for many.
Councillor Mrs Overton, you have asked the question, we are on limited time.
Thank you. I assume that councillor Mrs Overton is referring to commissioning, which of course this council does all the time and does very successfully. But it is true to say that every contract, although the vast majority of them are run very well and we have saved a lot of money over that, millions and millions of pounds by commissioning more efficiently, there will inevitably always be issues. So yes, of course, we are aware and if councillor Mrs Overton wishes to avail herself of the training of how we undertake commissioning, which has been given to all councillors, we can surely, we can avail ourselves of that. We do, it's not just about price, it's about delivering at the right specification. So if Mrs Overton wants to have some training on that, I'm more than happy to facilitate it.
Councillor Ian Fleetwood for councillor Colin Davie. No, you're not allowed to come back because you know that councillor Mrs.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a question to Colin Davie, portfolio holder for Economic Development. We have an agreed position across Lincolnshire in terms of the growth agenda and this is embodied in the signed-off Strategic Economic Plan and in work around the devolution agenda. Could the executive councillor outline to council the importance of ensuring infrastructure is delivered with the pace and certainty alongside growth and the mechanisms we will use to ensure appropriate contributions to infrastructure are agreed and in place? All yours, Colin.
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood, for the question. Firstly, obviously, we do have an ambitious growth agenda for Lincolnshire, it's embodied in the Strategic Economic Plan. You have heard me say in this chamber many times the necessity and need to deliver good infrastructure to support that growth agenda, not behind the curve, but in tandem and at pace with it. So obviously, working through our partnerships and you see my statement today regarding those partnerships, we're working forward with central Lincolnshire and our key ambition, as members will know, of the Central Link Plan Committee is to deliver Lincoln Eastern Bypass. For South East Links, we're working closely together, local plan is there. South Castran, we are working closely with them regarding the Grantham Growth Agenda and that is all in good order. East Lindsay, we have some challenges, but I'm sure we'll overcome those. The key thing for me in delivering infrastructure, making sure that section 106 agreements and SIL contributions are properly collected to fund the key priorities around infrastructure. And I think right now, we need to ensure above all things that commitments made are delivered. And we have made commitments in certain areas around the infrastructure growth and they will be delivered. The point I would really want to stress today is that district councils are our partners, equal partners in delivering the growth agenda. It is their responsibility of local planning authorities to collect the contributions needed to deliver the infrastructure. If there's going to be any slippage in delivery of infrastructure, then we would have to assess each planning application like we used to, on its own merits and whether that application would trigger growth, which was acceptable, or trigger problems for future generations. We always have the power to object to a planning application, we always have the power to ask the Secretary of State to call it in. So moving forward, we need to ensure we deliver the key stuff that we've talked about and the district councils need to comply with agreements we have to ensure we do so. Thank you.
Councillor Sarah Dodds for councillor Mrs Tricia Bradwell.
Thank you, Chairman. The government this week announced yet another set of educational reforms which have no basis on educational research or evidence. Will councillor Bradwell do what she did on forced academies and be brave enough to oppose yet another set of unwanted and unhelpful structural educational reforms and encourage this government to focus on what really works in schools, great leaders, great teachers and move away from their obsession with structures and processes?
Well, Mr Chairman, I think we're going to have a debate on grammar schools later. As I think I've said in public that I do support grammar schools. I think there is a place for grammar schools in Lincolnshire, has been for a long time. So, you know, I won't say much more. I think what the Prime Minister is trying to do is give all children across the country an opportunity to go to grammar school and that can't be a bad thing. So, you know, we have to have choice. All children aren't the same, all children need different needs in their education and I see grammar schools as a place in this county for children to go. We know parents like the choice that they have in Lincolnshire and I'm quite happy with it.
Councillor Stephen Palmer for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for the invite to your ceremony, which I found very enjoyable. Thank you. Yes, councillor Hill, I just want to ask you, and I don't think I can be referred to training on this one, I'd just like to ask you if you will support my feelings that are the essential part that parish and town councils are playing in this county's success. And I'd like you, if possible, to also give the councils appreciation that Mabelthorpe and Sutton Town Council are the first council in Lincolnshire to achieve gold status and only one of 20 in the whole country to achieve this status.
Well, thank you very much for that and of course, and I wasn't aware of, well, I think I was aware, but I would actually personally like to congratulate parish council on their magnificent achievement. Yes, I think I thank you for the question and we do fully support and encourage town and parish councils. They are vital to the life of this county in many ways and we do all we can to support them and I know most of them do all they can to support us. I've always been a great fan of town and parish councils and I think we do rely on them so much as a county council and long may it continue. So yes, I think they do a marvellous job for all of us, a marvellous unpaid job and sometimes it is a thankless job because when you're in a community, it sometimes can be very difficult with planning applications, for example, where parish councillors are within their community trying to deal with difficult issues where there are strong opinions. So I fully support them and I congratulate them and I acknowledge all the work that they do for many, many years for all of us.
Councillor Colin Mayer for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you. I'm not going to talk about potholes, Richard, but I have to mention it, potholes and libraries are the two favourites here. I understand with reducing budgets, with reducing staff, that more and more pressure's placed on officers in departments like highways and parish councillors, I know, have been instructed, for instance, not to communicate directly with officers, but to go through the customer service centre. We now have a situation where officers are telling county councillors, one in my group in particular, that they must go through the customer service centre as well and not talk directly to officers. And this sets a precedent that we should be worried about. In a way, if that spreads, what's the point in us being here if we only have the same access to the council as any member of the general public? Thank you.
Thank you for the question and thank you for mentioning potholes. We are in a transition, the highways department is moving as part of a future operating model from a setup where we had a lot more members of staff, we have vacancies and come the autumn, there will be less people employed looking after Lincolnshire highways and the structure will be very different. I think in the interim, it is difficult in terms of providing answers to questions. I don't think it's appropriate that councillors are told never to talk to highways officers. However, there is often a question of where is the best place to go for the piece of information required? And very often, websites and CSC will have access to information that's going to be a lot quicker for you to get specific answers rather than contacting an individual member of staff who may not have that information and has to go away and find it. The new model will involve having district managers, as it were, that will cover the area and I would envisage they being the go-to point of contact. We do have an issue, a broader issue in terms of capacity, that is getting worse. You know, I've been stood on, you know, street corners, that sounds wrong. That's not really relevant. I've been stood on paths, looking at curbstones very recently with a highways officer and in the course of a 45-minute conversation with him, he received, now if the numbers remember, 45 emails that all required an answer and we are doing what we can in terms of the department streamlined things. So I think we'll be issuing guidance come the autumn to say, what's the best way of getting the information you require? So for example, if you want to know what the future programme is for coming speed, actually the best way of getting that information will be to go to the website because that will be the up-to-date information. And what we'll try and do is come up with a way of, rather than bogging the system down with lots of emails and voicemails and telephone calls, trying to streamline it. But no, you can absolutely at times must talk to your local highways officers and you shouldn't be told that. However, it's the case, it's the best way of getting the right information.
Councillor John Hoff for councillor Martin Hill.
Agriculture and the food processing industry are highly important, as we know in Lincolnshire, with many livelihoods dependent on them. Seasonal workers and other working people from different European countries play a huge part in their success. Following the boat on Brexit, when will you set up an all party working group to look at how the damage from Brexit can be minimised for Lincolnshire, and come up with a plan for what should happen next?
Thank you for the question. I mean, obviously, you know, I do like to think I'm sort of important, but I'm not sure I am the right person, or indeed, this council is directly going to get involved with Brexit, no negotiations. What we will rely on is the government, but also the government has also involved local government through the local government association and other representatives. So they will have an input, as indeed will the agriculture industry, because it is a key issue for all of us. I think the question was turned in a very negative sense as well, and I think we need to accept there will be opportunities as well as challenges. And I think everybody's accepted, and I think throughout the whole debate that was had on Brexit, I don't think anybody said at any time that let's stop all migration, inward migration, full stop. It was always made clear, we need it as a country and certainly as a county, and that's where the position is. There are some difficult, complicated negotiations, but certainly, we will be engaging and feeding into the LGA's input into this discussion. There is a part of the committee, and I think that is the best way forward.
councillor Chris Payne for councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, chairman. I would like to thank councillor Davy and councillor Strange for letters to the government minister regarding scrutiny over burning animals and the cost and effect on roadside and bank side. Obviously, it does concern me, because my ward, we're talking over £5 million projected cost possible for action. Can councillor Davy just keep on top of the A and hold them to task to make sure they maintain river maintenance as a priority for the local residents that pay the taxes?
In a simple answer, yes. And I would say councillor Payne, your killer badger policy has been a great success, I think, this week. From the comments on social media, I just probably ought to remind you, it is a criminal offence to kill a badger or encourage anyone else to do so, six months in prison. So maybe one or two people in the chamber might want to encourage you to kill two. But on that basis, of course, we will continue to have a dialogue with the secretary of state regarding this matter. Government has to make a decision about the balances between the natural environment and sea and river defences and flood defences generally. Quite honestly, you know, the amount of money that's needed to be spent to protect our coastline and to protect our communities from flooding in the years ahead is so enormous, we cannot afford to have money spent in other areas which are regarded by some people as minor. So we do need to get a correct balance. But I do think that the headlines probably have not helped this week, councillor Payne. But a dialogue will continue with the Environment Agency, and you have to remember, they are the exemplar. They have to do this by the book. They cannot just make decisions like some people can. So on that basis, we'll keep the dialogue going.
councillor Ron Oxby for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. I wish to withdraw my question. It has actually been answered by councillor Davies before the meeting, and I don't think it's appropriate to ask it in here. Okay?
So councillor Neil Murray for councillor Nickworth.
Thank you, chairman. As members may know, the St Giles youth centre in Lincoln was destroyed by fire recently. My question for councillor Worth is, could we meet up to discuss this and to see what we can do to provide a youth facility for the St Giles area, perhaps working in partnership with Lincolnshire council?
If you had, I can deal with this question, because I've already had some discussions about this with a member of the Labour group who is also city councillor. So yes, you will be engaged in the conversation. Yeah, there is an ongoing conversation, which, you know, we will look at how to, what the best course of action is to look at now the youth centre has burnt down.
councillor Ray Wotton for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Hill, could you give me an update with regard to the opening hours at Grantham Hospital? Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Well, there is obviously a debate later on today about the A&E situation at Grantham. I just thought it would be opportune to update the council on recent developments. As you're aware, currently, because of recruitment difficulties that ULHT have, Grantham A&E is closed from, currently closed from 6.30 in the evening till 9 o'clock in the morning. I've had previously meetings with NHS colleagues, and obviously expressed the view that notwithstanding that they've had to shut the A&E overnight for safety reasons, it's surely not correct that the hospital doors in Grantham are locked for virtually two thirds of the 15 hours a day. So I'm pleased to say that they've taken away that view, and I think they understood the issue. So I'm pleased to announce here today that colleagues in the NHS have actually, I am told, been able to resolve that issue. So from Monday onwards, I am told, there will be an out of hours service available in the hospital, which will do with minor injuries and illnesses, which will enable the public of Grantham to have direct access to the hospital, medical experts, till, I believe, 11.30 at night. So that is not, of course, reinstating the A&E, which is the long term aspiration, I hope, of this council. But it is at least something where the public of Grantham have something a bit better than a locked door at 7 o'clock at night.
councillor Mrs Helen Powell for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I'd just like to highlight a slight mismatch, I feel, and it's to do with Lincolnshire being on the up and attracting visitors and business, pride of place, keeping up appearances, and the expected growth in the economy. Two things: when people are short of funds, they always keep the place looking tidy and presentable. When I was growing up with very little money in our house, but the place was always clean and tidy. And the second thing is, we always looked after our guests and visitors as if nothing was wrong. Our cities and towns have to be kept clean and tidy. Grass cutting on the main routes, hanging baskets, flowered roundabouts are key, absolutely key, to our economy continuing to grow and look attractive to visitors and to be seen
Can we have a question, please, rather than a straight line?
And to be seen to be open for business. Can I have some sort of indication of what could be turned around? Because at the moment, the cuts to all the grass cutting are leaving some of the roundabouts in Bourne and on Main Roads looking absolutely like nobody cares, and we're being blighted by it. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I mean, to a certain extent, we covered this off in the budget process, didn't we? I mean, we went through, I know you weren't able to make the highways budget meeting, where we went into in some detail. The simple fact is, do we put hanging baskets up in Bourne, or do we fill potholes? The harsh reality we're in is, there are lots of things we would like to do. I would like to see more flowers, I'd like to see more trees, but not at the cost of the basic maintenance of a highway. And what we are doing is, we're working with, it's already been highlighted this morning, parish councils, town councils and district councils, to try and do what we can where we can. But as I think every member will appreciate, when you are facing your steer times we're in, the days of doing the nice to have, sorry, the days of doing the nice to do simply are over. So no, I can't give you any assurances that we're going to turn things around. And I'm afraid, in terms of your own area, if you want your grass cut more often than it stands for the local community to work with us to do that.
councillor Nev Jackson for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Davies, the discussions with the rail companies in respect of services are ongoing. One of the major problems for Lincolnshire is the dearth of services on a Sunday. Often, they're only late in the afternoon. They give no opportunity for visitors to come to our attractions, or for people from this part of the world to visit attractions outside of this county. I wonder if you can tell us how far the rail franchise discussions have got, and whether we are pressing the Sunday service issue?
Thank you for the question. And you're right, it's a source of constant frustration that within the franchise arrangements, local authorities currently don't have as much influence as I think we probably both agree we should have. I think it's also fair to say that the Virgin franchise awarding did bring in a huge additional round of services for the first time, mentioned for Lincoln Direct Services, better services on a Sunday, increased capacity, longer trains, better trains, which I think is also important. We do constantly meet with both Network Rail as the infrastructural supplier, but also Virgin in East Midlands Trains as the train companies, to push this point more and more. However, as I'm sure councillor Brewes would say if he was here, when you start the path analysis that's required to bring in extra trains, you end up in an incredibly complicated situation where you start talking about journey times between places of the rail line. The simple fact of the matter is that the rail issues we are experiencing now in Lincoln and Lincolnshire and across the country are down to the fundamental lack of investment. There is not enough rolling stock to provide as many trains as we'd like. And that is something that I have to say, I'm very supportive of the government's investment in this front, but I'm afraid it's going to be sometime, you know, 2019, 2020, till we start to see those kind of improvements.
councillor Kev Clark for councillor Barry Young.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Young, the government have imposed correctly a levy of apprenticeships on local government. Will then this council pass that levy on to all new contracts awarded by this authority? Because after all, both of them are funded by the public purse, so should carry the same levy.
I'm confused. If the firms you're talking about, to which businesses contracted, subcontracted, have employees, they too will be liable for the apprenticeship levy?
councillor Mrs Alison Austin for councillor Mrs Tricia Bradwell.
Councillor Bradwell, as you know, yesterday, it was announced that nationally, many providers of home care are withdrawing from contracts with local authorities. Home care provided by the Castle Rock Group in the Boston area experienced a number of serious problems since they took over as the council's local provider last year. Boston is an area of known low unemployment, and many of the problems relate to CRG's inability to recruit sufficient carers locally. What steps are being taken to ensure that this matter is addressed in Boston, please?
Thank you for that question. I would just disagree with you a little. CRG, or Castle Rock, if you've just said, have been working extremely well up until this summer, and they have had a problem in recruitment. Our commissioning team are working with them to try and get more people working from them. They do mention that this came about after Brexit, but I don't think there is any evidence to say that. Some of our team here have been out to meet with the Job Centre, and as you say, there is low unemployment in Boston, and I think that is the reason. What Castle Rock, they're taking this really seriously. Their regional manager's been on to our lead in the commissioning team, and they've now taken on a dedicated recruiting person to ensure that they really do have a big push about getting new people to work from them. They're working with Boston College, who do a special course for providers and social care, and so they've made links there to get the new people coming in and having some sort of work experience, and hopefully, they'll come and work for them as well. So we are trying to address this issue with one of our providers. As I say, they have been a very good provider up until this blip over the summer. What we are also doing, though, is, because obviously, home care is essential for people who need it, is that we've, obviously, the providers who work on the periphery of the Boston area are helping, and also our reablement service has been helping as well, so that people are continuing to get care. But across the county, our other 11 providers, many have no waiting lists now, whereas in 2015, we would have over 100 sometimes, 200 on waiting lists. So across the county, things are going well. But we have got this blip in Boston, and we are working to resolve it.
councillor William Webb for councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Another update, please, for councillor Hill. Could the leader please update the council on the present position on the devolution agenda, which is hugely concerning at the moment?
Thank you for the question. Obviously, members are aware, there is a special council meeting next month, where we'll all have the opportunity to vote on whether we will go for this mayor or combined authority or not. And obviously, we've also had in the consultation results, so that will, I won't go into that debate today. Just to say that, obviously, with the change of prime minister and change of secretary of state, there has been some speculation as to what the rules, if you like, are in terms of having to have a directly elected mayor to enable us to have substantial devolution and some extra money. So I think it's now emerged over the last week or so that the government is quite clear, that is sticking to its original position, so that it will be the case that if we want to, if we want to have the devolution deal, which is currently being consulted, which has been consulted on, we will have to, when we come to the vote, if we want the devolution deal to happen, we will have to accept a mayor. So that will be a choice that members will have to make. We also would like some more clarification on our secondary bid, which went in. So I had a discussion with the secretary of state yesterday, I think it was. So there are some issues which want resolving, in particular, whether our secondary bid, which is currently with the department, whether that will be rest or not. And obviously, we need to know. But I think the situation is being clarified, so we can all, when we come to vote next month, we will be fairly clear what the situation is. We are also going to offer, the week before the council meeting, an information day for councillors, so anybody can attend to get a full briefing on what the situation is, so that we are all fully informed before we come to vote on the 23rd, 20th of October. Thank you.
Rob Parker for councillor Martin Hill.
Ahead of the local government settlement next year, this is a time when you and your colleagues will be working hard to lobby on behalf of Lincolnshire, I suppose, local government in general. Bearing in mind that it's county council elections across the whole of the UK, and that's usually the time when any amendments can be found for counties rather than districts or anywhere else, because that's where the elections are, can you tell me what the priorities are for lobbying to make sure that local government in general, but Lincolnshire in particular, gets a decent settlement? Heard of questions around adult social care, for example. We've had questions about the shortfall in funding. Can you give us any assurances that there's going to be some light at the end of the tunnel?
Well, obviously, I mean, I can't give you that assurance, because obviously, later on, we'll be discussing budget issues, as you're aware. I do think we will continue to strongly lobby on this matter. And you are correct, there is an issue for local government in general, and there is an issue for the county council in particular, because we are one of the, we'll shortly be the lowest funded county council in the country. So there's a big issue, and there should be obviously using the usual methods to lobby that, including with our Lincolnshire MPs. Obviously, there is, as I've said before, there's the LGA in the county council network. We can use those lobbies. But of course, particularly with the LGA, there is an issue that there is a conflict of interest there, because those who are much better funded than Lincolnshire will obviously try and defend their position. I think the other thing which is also in the pot at the moment is the localisation of business rates. And again, there's a national discussion going on about that as well. And although the government has made it clear that will And although the government has made it clear that will be a cost neutral exercise, there could be, may be, an opportunity where they could, in terms of the extra funding that comes to councils, they could take the opportunity to try and address the unfair situation where we sit at the moment, where frankly, you know, if you're in Manchester, for example, as I've said before, and if we had their level of funding, we wouldn't be talking about any cuts at all, and we could be having baskets, maybe, probably not, we could be putting baskets and cutting the roundabouts or whatever. So I think you're right to establish this, and it is a big issue for us, but in the meantime, we will have to, as a prudent council, make plans to deliver it. And obviously, we will be undertaking a one-year budget to get us up to the election period, and then it will be for the new council. But I can assure councillor Parker and all members, we will be fighting very strongly to make sure that we get a fair crack of the whip. And the local government needs to understand, and the new secretary of state needs to understand that yet more cuts will make even more difficult decisions necessary in years to come.
Councillor Jeff Ellis for councillor Richard Davis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Chairman. Sorry, wrong place. Sorry, wrong place. Yeah, slip of the tongue. Chairman, Richard, and I'm sure that Mark will probably back me up on this, as somebody who is affected and lives directly in this. The road improvements that took place three years ago on New Road in Lincoln have undoubtedly speeded up traffic exiting the city, but have had the reverse effect on inbound traffic, a situation made worse by a bus stop just beyond the Rookery Lane turning, where if a bus is stopping, traffic that is inbound cannot get past. Is there any possibility an assessment can be made to see if there can be any adjustment of the traffic system to improve the inbound traffic flow into the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The short answer is, I don't think so at this stage. Members will be aware, the Rookery improvements were designed to improve speed of traffic leaving the city, certainly in the afternoon and the early evening, and the assessment that was done 12 months after showed about an 11% reduction in congestion coming out of the city, but about a 3% increase in congestion coming in. So there's no doubt that things have got margin of error coming into the city, because with limited road space, really what you're doing is you're, in essence, moving the deck chairs around a little bit. Unless you can create extra lanes, put new roads in, you can't necessarily improve things in all ways. I have to say, I share your frustrations about the location of bus stops. I think the fact that we get such opposition and very vocal opposition to off-carriageway bus stops now is a real problem. The operators in particular refuse to use them in part, and as a result, will often stop in inappropriate places if we don't accommodate their needs. I think at this stage, because of the amount of utilities, and members will be aware that that particular set of roadworks involved opening up on the road bridge and finding pipes that everybody disavowed any knowledge of until we started making holes in them, that I would be very nervous about repeating that process elsewhere. I mean, we will continue to look. I think we've done some minor improvements in terms of upgrading the traffic signals, putting some more sensors down to improve things. However, it's just one of many pinch point schemes we have across the county. I'm happy to keep looking at it, but I can't promise you anything major at this stage. My pleasure.
Councillor Phil Dilks for councillor Mrs Tricia Bradwell.
Thank you, Chairman. I congratulate you too on holding your service a dedication in your own patch. It's a good service. To councillor Mrs Bradwell, I was not surprised, Tricia, to see you a couple of weeks ago on National BBC, enthusiastically promoting the idea of more grammar schools and more selection. I was, however, rather surprised at your choice of words, saying that we have grammar schools in Lincolnshire for our elite children. Can I ask why you think we can identify children as elite at age 11 in Lincolnshire, and why you won't look down the other end of the telescope and end the postcode lottery that results in some secondary modern schools in Lincolnshire achieving five A to Cs for over 60% of their pupils, while others achieve the same for only 19%? That's less than one in five. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Well, actually, if you sat by my side whilst I was doing this interview, which took two hours, and they spent a minute, they'd taken out a conversation about, was talking about the top 25% children usually get into grammar schools, and I had suggested, yes, they were the elite. But then I went on to talk about how well our children do in secondary schools and comprehensive schools. And I have to say, if you looked at our exam results this year, our children in secondary schools, and that did extremely well. So that's where we are. I use that, but I say, you didn't get the whole story about how I went on to praise secondary schools and comprehensive schools as well. And as we're going to have the debate later on, I'll just sit down.
Councillor Robin Renshaw for councillor Richard Davis.
After a request from town councillors, you visited Stamford and subsequently contractors that have been carrying out repairs to cracked and broken paving stones, which Stamford people consider a miracle. Will you walk with me on Nettlem Road in my division, which has cracked and broken paving stones caused by contractors and developers who have free licence to vandalise public infrastructure, and which has heavy footfall on the route to the hospital, schools and the city centre to carry out yet another miracle?
I'm very happy to stand on the street corner with you, Robin. You only had to ask. But the serious point is right, actually, absolutely, we'll come and look at it. I think I share your concerns about some of the damage that's done to our footways and our highways. We work, and the local teams work very hard to perform and act for assessment, it's not always possible to capture what happens. And I know, I think councillor David will agree with me, particularly with some of the wind farms that we see, this has been a real concern on some of our more rural routes. I don't think it's fair for private companies to get away damaging the roads and our footways that people rely on to go around their business. So absolutely very happy to come and have a look.
Thank you, and that was the last question. Thank you, councillors, for brief questions most of the time, and you're not on the list, councillor Mrs Ayling. Have we finished the 45 minutes? No. Who is your question for?
Thank you, Chairman. You don't have to stand on any street corners. What I'm asking you is to come and have a site visit to Hoyt North Saints, or even implement a risk assessment on the pavement down the main road, which is not only overgrown but severely cracked, there is actually a blind school near there, so partially sighted people can injure themselves. And not only that, quite a lot of elderly people in the village are struggling with their mobility, and also people with pushchairs. Over the road from that is a bridleway, which desperately needs a carriage gate, because it's currently used by people racing four-by-fours, causing problems for equestrian users and the local community. And while you're at it, Hoyt and St Peters at the other end of the village have severe problems with potholes. And I am mentioning potholes, because they are a big issue. So may I ask that you come and do a site visit, please, and there are no corners involved, with the possibility of maybe doing a risk assessment on the pavement?
Very happy to come. It'll be the second time I've visited your division recently, so I'm very happy to do that. I think in terms of doing a risk assessment, that's certainly not our process and policy. As per the Highways Estate Management Plan, our footways and roadways are assessed, but Highways offices, according to the hierarchy, I've utmost confidence that they do that to the best of their ability in a thorough professional way. That doesn't necessarily mean we get out of it the outcomes we want, unfortunately. That's not to say, though, I will happily come out and visit, despite the fact that you don't want to stand on a street corner. So the weight's coming up?
Thank you, councillors. It just appears we have finished questions. Right. Number seven, review of financial performance. Before I ask councillor Hill to propose it, I propose we suspend council procedure rules to allow one debate to take place for the following motion and amendment. Do I have a second, or?
I've got one. Chairman, I'd like to second that.
Yeah. Right. I have to put it to the council. All those in favour? Any abstentions? Right, so unanimous. Right, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. So the alert amongst you, you would have gathered, then there will be an amendment proposed by councillor Parker, so I think we'll have one debate. So I'd just like to introduce this paper briefly, because obviously, hopefully members will be able to read it in thoroughly. And obviously, it does acknowledge a sort of good position in many senses, that we haven't overspent this year. Unlike the NHS, for example, this council always manages to, at least coming with budget, and actually normally underspend. So the report is basically giving the outturn of the year report, and actually details, I think we're asked to be more open and transparent. So after the meeting of the overview and scrutiny committee, all of the issues about where the 1% underspendings would be carried forward, because it is council policy, again, unlike the government, we do say that if there is an underspend, where there is an underspend, the relevant part of the council can actually then keep 1% of that and then decide what to do with it. So at the back of the papers, you will see there, there's a full list of where the underspends are being proposed, are being recommended to be spent here. And it is a good situation, and I think, in the light of the issues we've had about the financial information, due to, you know, some issues with our SOCO contractor, it is very pleasing that managers throughout the whole of the council have done an excellent job in making sure that they are within budget. So I think this is a prudent way forward, and obviously, you will also note that we are putting, again, some money into reserves, which I think is prudent. And it's just fair to say that over the coming years, currently, as things stand at the moment, we are looking at an annual saving target of £40 million every single year. That's sort of where we think we probably are at the moment. So I do think it is right to actually try and look at that. So the idea that some people try and say, there's lots of money hanging around, why don't we spend it? We are being very prudent, and we are being able, therefore, to actually make sure that if the worst case scenario does happen, and we don't get some relief, we are in a better position in future years, or the new council will be in a better position in future years to be able to deal with the issues. So I think that's all I want to say, it is fairly clear in that report. So it is a good position, I congratulate managers to actually achieving an underspend, and obviously, I'll await for the amendment to come forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Whitton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm happy to second the motion, and I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Councillor Parker.
Could I begin by agreeing with councillor Hill, that officers have done good work in getting the books to balance to the extent they have? The second small point is that on the order proceedings at the bottom of page four, that there is a tiny error in the sense that it mentions page 96, when it should mean page 69, being asked to bring that to people's attention. I do agree with councillor Hill, that you could argue that it's a good outcome in financial terms, but it's not a good outcome in service delivery. If all that we're bothered about as a council is making sure that we at least balance the spending, and if possible, get a shortfall, then that's fine in finance terms, but it's not in service delivery. We know that there are many areas of the county council where people's needs are going unmet. If I just start from the King's Fund report that people will have read this week, I'm sure, 'social care for older people is under massive pressure, increasing numbers of people are not receiving help they need, which in turn puts a strain on carers. Access to care depends increasingly on what people can afford.' That's a starting point for why we decided to put in our amendment extra money into adult social care. I think the point that needs making is that there are unmet needs in this council all over the place, in terms of the services that we are statutorily expected to deliver. The point being that we choose to move, in a sense, the threshold for which people qualify, makes it difficult for people to access services which are important. The Local Government Association responded to the King's Fund report, arguing very strongly that something needs doing about it. And as a starting point for the current year, the government should bring forward the £700, £700 million Better Care Fund money earmarked for the end of the decade, so the government are promising some money in 2020, to this current year, to protect vital social care services. That's why I asked the question about what are we doing to lobby into the LGA to try to get the government to see that the problem is now, now as we head for winter. So that's in relation to adult social care. The second point I want to make relates to the way that overview and scrutiny management committee and scrutiny committees work, and that's about the delivery to each of the scrutiny committees regularly and consistently, the up-to-date position on underspend, so that it can be changed in year. One of the things that overview and scrutiny management actually referred to, page 78 of the council proceedings, is this idea of trying to allow for consideration in the current year, to enable underspends to be improved sooner, rather than being reported at the end of the financial year. That would allow for in-house, sorry, in-year creation of recognition of needs and allocating budgets. Now, that's the way that a lot of organisations, and I can't help but ask the question, what do scrutiny committees do to bring about up-to-date knowledge, so that pressures that are brought in year can be met by in-year underspend? One of the points is, again, also made, is that no executive directors had submitted any bids to carry forward underspends in excess of 1%. Yet we know that in relation to children's services, that paper went to children's services looking at cost pressures, and we could identify out-of-county residential, out-of-county fostering placement, fostering placements, again, the special guardianship orders, all went to a recent children's services scrutiny committee, but they were considered to be cost pressures. Now, it seems as though we need to reconcile, side by side, spending, the pressures, service demands, and the money that we're not spending in the current year. It seems as though we're incapable of making any decisions about the way that we allocate budgets until the end of the year. Here we were, looking at the period from April last year to March this year, and here we are in September, then allocating money, when we could have been doing it in year. The final point I'd want to make relates to this question of the Wisby recycling centre. We recognise that it is important that access to services are local. People, I'm sure, understand in the Lincoln area that we do not want to see the area around Great Northern Terrace, for example, finding difficulties because of people coming, travelling unnecessarily. This is part of an environmental context. We've made the argument that it was a wrong decision that was made in the first place. Councillor Kirk came and presented a petition, and in a sense, nothing happened. But this is about local services being delivered for local people in relevant areas. Of course, we could all take the idea that having the warehouse approach, where people can travel 25 miles to do business, but that's not about what local services are about. That may be what central government decides, but we're talking about local government, local services for local people. So the three things come together: adult social care, children's services, Wisby. We have money, okay. We're not talking about all of the money not going into financial volatility reserve, but we think this is a reasonable, modest way of recognising need now, not in a sense saying that the rules are such, and that we can't take these forward as cost pressures. We're saying we can, and we're saying that we should. That's why I'm moving this amendment on behalf of the Labour Group.
Councillor John Hough.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to put a bit more detail on some of these cost pressures. Trish answered a question earlier about the delayed discharges in the hospital, and in effect was saying, well, really, it's not our fault, we've done a lot to do something about this, and that really, it's the NHS. Well, in the report that went to adult scrutiny, it talks about, there were, in the most recent quarter, 9,280... quarter, 9,218 delayed days. That's an awful lot of delay for old people who are in hospital waiting to come out. And it says that the majority of this is due to the NHS, which is the point that I think Trish was making. But we are responsible for something like, out of that, something like 2,200 days. That's 2,200 days of delayed discharges that older people have had to wait in hospital because we haven't been able to find a package in the community for them, or a care home replacement, which are the two biggest issues. Now, we think if we have some £20 million that we didn't spend last year, that rather than putting it all into reserves, this is a critical issue, not just for us, not just for the NHS, but it is for the older people in our community who are affected by this. And we believe that we should be flexible enough when these cost pressures occur, because these figures are some 33% up on last year, and are significantly higher than two and three years ago. That, to me, is something that we ought to be doing something about. The issue generally is that the approach we take is we will slash services, we will ensure that money is saved, and then we'll have £20 million at the end of it. And it's been year after year after year while I've been on this council, we've ended up with a surplus. Now, I accept that unlike the NHS, we have to statutorily, we cannot set a deficit budget. Nonetheless, we can be flexible enough during the year, when we see that we are actually having money that we haven't spent, to be able to use it to actually protect some of the services for some of the most vulnerable people in our communities: older people, children with disabilities, adults with disabilities, children who are having to be looked after in fostering care. These are the kind of absolute priorities that I think nearly everyone right across this chamber think are important. Here is an opportunity in our amendment to actually do something about this, and actually do something about it now. And I'm happy to second our amendment.
Councillor Mrs Marion Overton, please.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman. I recognise that there is some funding and underspend, and I do think it is sensible to actually use that, rather than just putting it in reserves, although we're doing a bit of both, and I think that's helpful. This actually earmarks a small portion of the underspend, rather than actually spending it directly, it actually earmarks it. And I think that makes it a sensible move. The other point about trying to use the money in year is that we are already using the underspend from last year, this year. So we're already running along in that way. So if we were able to spend it in year this year, we'd actually be using bits of two underspends. So I think that would actually be, it may not be as much money as we would like, because some of it's already there. But the fundamental point I'm trying to make is that we should not be having large reserves when we have very desperate situations in our communities. Particularly the recycling centres, as we mentioned, both at Wisby and also, of course, at Lednum. It's closing rural services that are relatively cost-effective, and forcing people to centralise, the services centralised, so forcing people to travel further, and the expense is therefore not saved, it's transferred to the private individuals. And I feel that, therefore, it is a false economy, because of course, the knock-on effects can be unhelpful. We are trying to improve our environment, we're trying to improve our economy, and we would like to try to keep the carbon down and all of those things. Encouraging more transport of individuals with their rubbish is not helpful. The point also about the children's services is, I think, relevant, and those of us who were privileged enough to visit the prison recently, and actually see from the inside just how harsh and unpleasant and difficult an environment that is, both to manage and for the inmates, recognising that the proportion of young people who we have failed, because we have not been able to get them well-educated, we've not been able to get them to think positively about a useful future, that they can contribute to Lincolnshire. So I do feel that those are vital services. I would like to add highways, as has been mentioned, of the other difficulties that have already been risen. So I recognise that we're in an overall situation of reducing budgets, and that is very difficult. We have to make savings, but where there is a little bit of money, let's put it to good use. Thank you.
Councillor Neb Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. I look at the proposals and think what somebody outside of the authority would look at. Because if you look at it in the eyes of somebody not directly involved, you look and say, right, they've got the services at the standard they want. They don't need this money because they're not spending it. So the starter for next year is, we'll start at that level, it doesn't need improving, and we'll look for further efficiencies. I don't believe we reached the standard that the electorate of this county expect in respect of support for the needy within our society. But obviously, the controlling group believe they do, and therefore, the money is cut, and in future years, a cynic would say, government would look at it and say, if that's the level you want, that's where we start from.
Councillor Robin Rancho.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I support the amendment, as you might expect. The underlying status for me is the fact that we levy the council tax in one particular year, and hard-working families in this county expect us to spend that money in that year. Now, we know that we have to have reserves, and the reserves we put in the budget last February has been adequate, and, okay, there will be a bit of variance from that, so we would normally expect that. But when there are underlying needs that we mentioned in our amendment, I think we have to think we've done something wrong there. In the children's services, for instance, I do know, and it was raised at the Lincolnshire Youth Council, which I'd been invited to the other Saturday, and which were very enlightening, and there are clear difficulties for children who attend our post-16 education establishments. A lot of them are having to face a choice of walking to these establishments instead of using the public transport, because it's a choice, they haven't got the money to do it. And some of the facilities we had put in previously have not been continuing, so there's a certain, there's a shortage in that area, which we certainly should be looking at, and I'm sure that the feedback from the Lincolnshire Youth Council will highlight in the future. I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Phil Delks.
Thank you, Chairman. We know we're facing cuts right across the council. We heard from councillor Richard Davis this morning, who actually told us that the only thing that we can guarantee won't be cut is the grass. And I'm not saying we should put more than money into grass cutting, but I am saying that we should think of those who give us the money. Good conservative thinking, you know. When we went to the people of Lincolnshire last April, we told them that we were facing massive government cuts, the biggest ever, and it was essential that we put their council tax up. And we did that, and I supported putting the council tax up. And you could argue perhaps we should have put it up previously and not accepted the government's bribe, which would have placed us in a better place today financially. I understand that we have underspends on such a big budget, of course we do, but in this council, we seem to have a fetish about cuts, and about, and we seem to run the authority on how we can actually not provide the services that people need, despite how much of the money that we collect from the people, we can actually squirrel away and put in the bank. And that doesn't seem right to me, it's morally wrong. We need to spend the money, we promised to spend the money on the services that people need, and that's what we should do. And within the year, we should have the flexibility to actually do that. Right now, we've got the money, the need is there, we're identifying, you know, modest areas, three specific areas, where, you know, there are clearly demands for services, you know, but instead, we shut down waste recycling centres, say, sorry, we haven't got the money. We have got the money. That's what we're just discovering now. We're now deciding, what are we going to do with the money? And rather than put it in the bank, I think we should actually, it's morally right, it is morally wrong to actually not spend that on the services that we promised the people of Lincolnshire that we would spend it on. So I support the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Rosie Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think Marianne and Phil said eloquently what I feel as a county councillor. We're here to serve the people of Lincolnshire, and I know that's why you all have been elected to serve, and it's about providing services for the people of Lincolnshire, which incorporates the waste facility, recycling waste facility, which was closed down in Wisby and Lednum, the one that I campaigned on to get reinstated in Wisby. I can assure you that the residents in Lincolnshire are very upset that that waste facility was shut, and if they know that there is money that is available to reinstate these waste facilities, then I can assure you, they will not be very happy when they hear that there is money that can be provided for these facilities. I would say that it would be prudent to retain services, such as the waste facility. It was a well-valued service. I'd also say that money should be, extra money should be going to adult social care, because we know the, sort of, the pressures that are on adult social care at the moment. The need is now, that's what the need is, and we have those extra resources at this moment in time that we can put into those services, because in order for services to be valued and retained, that's what the people of Lincolnshire voted us for. They wanted us to represent them and spend our tax money for the services that they value. That is what we are here today to speak about, to do the good for the community, and I know that that's what the majority of people, all of the councils here, about serving the community. That's why we got involved in politics, that is why we are here today, we want to help the community. So all that we're asking in our amendment is to take some of the money that is from the, instead of going into these reserves, to be spent on these services now for the people of Lincolnshire. It's common sense, that's what it's about, common sense. And I know the Conservatives have always said it's about common sense. Well, I believe in common sense, and I believe in aspiration, and I think that the people of Lincolnshire deserve to have their services retained, that's what it's about. And I think you should really think about being positive, being progressive, thinking about the future, and thinking about these services, because once they're gone, they're gone, and it's very difficult to bring them back. So that's what you've got to think about when you're making these decisions. Once they're gone, they're gone, and the need is now, that is what the need is, and that's what we're here to do. We're here to represent the people and to allocate.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Councillor Tricia Bradwell, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I'm just going to try and stop some myths that are coming over from the other side of the room, because, and especially you, Rosie, who are vice-chairman of adults, I know that you already know this, because it was actually at the meeting, that with the adult care budget, we have had less people going into residential this last year, and that is because people are staying at home longer. Majority of people going into adult care increasingly go in at 83, not as they did years ago, because we're keeping them in adult at home longer. And what is also happening is, and which are not taken account, is the wellbeing service. Rob mentioned the King's Fund, actually, the King's Fund did a report recently about prevention and keeping people at home for longer, and that is what the wellbeing service is doing. It is actually helping to keep people healthy, keep their minds occupied and that. And the wellbeing services, you know, really, we know from statistics now, is helping to stop people coming in to adult care later. And so therefore, I think when you're looking at what we spend in the adult arena, that budget needs to be added on. The investment that we've actually, the money we didn't spend, we have reinvested in DOLs and supporting more home care, so we will be doing that. We're just shifting the budget around, which was allocated to residential care. John going on, mentioning out-of-county placements, yes, that did become an issue, and it was used as a cost pressure, and this next year, that will be in our base budget. You know, we found that we had an issue, and actually, that was addressed mid-year. So, you know, I do believe that we're a very, very good council at managing our money, and yes, we have an underspend, but that isn't because we're not spending, you know, wasting money, we are very good, and we know in the future, if you were to spend it all over the next year or so, we wouldn't have anything left in the cupboard, would we, for a few, for say, four years' time? So I believe we are prudent, but actually, we are providing services to the residents of Lincolnshire, and we're doing that in a way that we're still going to have money to do it next year and the next year. So I can't agree, Mr Chairman, with the alternative recommendations to the budget. I think we're doing a very good job, and when you look at what services this council has to provide, they are enormous, and I think we're doing, you know, very well at that. Thank you.
Councillor Sarah Dodg.
Thank you, Chairman. If I'm thinking about my own family budget, I might pat myself on the back if I've managed to put a bit of extra cash into our savings account each week, each month, or whatever, but only if I've actually managed to feed my kids for that week, that month. There's no point me putting money aside if there is an immediate need that I, as a parent, need to respond to now. And that is what we're saying over here, that there are immediate needs that our communities have now, and that we need to respond to as a council. We are utterly consistent within, on this side of the chamber, in saying that it is our communities and the services that we provide to them that matter most, and our record here is consistent in saying that that is our priority, and that is where our efforts and our energy should be, not, as Phil highlighted, in putting money into the reserves. We recognise that there is a need for prudency in that, but ultimately, our response should be to our communities and to their needs. This shows that we're responsive, it shows that we're listening to what our communities want, to what they need. Their needs are not getting easier, their needs are getting ever more complex. If we needed to do something a while ago, if our residents needed the Wisby site a few years ago, that need has not gone away. And if we do find that we have the ability to still provide that service, then we should take that. The needs of our older generation, the needs of our children, are not getting easier, they're getting harder. The way we have these underspends, we should show that we're responsive, that we're flexible, and that we can actually put that money into the front line, because as councillor Delk said, that is what the public would expect us to do, with their money, not with ours.
Councillor Stephen Palmer.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll be the first to admit, I'm not an expert at finance, big figures boggle me. However, I do like to look at things from the outside, and what is coming across from the Labour Group is that they are looking at it from what the expectations of the people we represent are thinking. And the problem we have, I see in this, that somebody looking at this from the outside would say, they're cutting services all the time for us, and yet, on the other hand, they're saying we've got spare money to put into. to put into reserves. If you're a community service who goes to a funder and asks for funding, they will look at your bank account, and they will say, you've got too much money in the bank. Why are you asking us for funding? Why don't you spend what you've got first? And I think there's a little bit of element in that. The other thing that I was always taught was during good periods, you save for the rainy day. We need to recognise, and I think most of us do, that we've been in the rainy day for a couple of years now, at least. And we, I do feel, just in a general view, without going into deep finance, which will just boggle me anyway, I've got to admit that, that I feel that the Labour Group are saying that we need to be a bit more balanced about this. We need to share that underspend into some into reserves, but some to support the services now that our residents expect us to do. I'm still, I've heard Patricia's words, but I'm still waiting for the balanced response from that side of the House, the chamber. Because as a good Lincolnshire independent, we listen to both sides and then make our minds up. But I've got to say, at the moment, I'm being swayed by the argument from the left. Thank you.
councillor Colin Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. People talk about rainy days. There are no sunny days in our finances. We, in reality, plan our budgets over the last couple of years to deliberately eat into our financial volatility reserves. When we say we've underspent, we've still spent out of our savings. So it isn't a matter that the government give us this big pot, and we use part of it. The government give us a small pot, we add to it out of our savings, and we save a little bit, but we're still spent out of our savings. We must look at the bigger picture. Councillor Hill rightly said that he continues to lobby for fairer treatment for Lincolnshire. What's happening is that they keep us down here, and then we keep ourselves busy fighting each other, instead of fighting for the common cause. We've got to look to the future. We talk about becoming a larger authority with larger responsibilities. Like Marianne, I went to prison recently. And the atmosphere in there, you could cut with a knife. The tense atmosphere in there. Ninety percent of the prisoners have got mental health problems, according to the governor, who at the same time told us he was so fed up of everything that he was leaving. And the week he left, guess what? Went into lockdown yesterday, they had a riot. The justice system, if we take it over in the future, is going to cost us a fortune, the way things are set up. And it'll cost us a fortune because of the inability that the whole country's got to tackle mental health services in the community. We've got a big job in front of us. Instead of moving a few debt chairs round on the Titanic, worrying about, you know, 10,000 here and 20,000 there. Yeah, we're maintaining the services as best we can, in my opinion. I see lots of cracks. But we've got to start looking at the bigger picture. And when we start, when we have this debate next month, we need to have firmly at the top of our mind the wider responsibilities of the council, and remember all the time that just now, we're living on our savings.
councillor Charmaine Morgan.
Thank you very much. Okay, I look at things quite simply, and I tend to look at the casework that I'm dealing with as an indication of where things are and are not working. And it's very interesting that certainly in my area, two of the key areas highlighted by councillor Parker are those which reflect the areas of issue, certainly in my division. First of all, I'd like to pick up the waste recycling centre. It's simply a false economy to cut back on waste collection. Now, I have a holiday cottage in Bishop Auckland. And in Bishop Auckland, I could take waste to the centre seven days a week. And it's open till 6pm every day. And when I look at the, in comparison, measly operational hours at Grantham's Waste Recycling Centre, that's as it is, it may explain why there are people in my area who every day face black sacks on the streets in the front of their houses. I am not prepared to tell them that this council has properly and adequately tackled waste collection services or provision of services, and is prepared to further cut that budget. Now, that's an area where we have service. And we, as we have just discussed, we have actually closed services elsewhere. It's simply not acceptable not to put the funding in. And it's a completely false economy. Because as it happens, my area is a gateway to Grantham. We've got gravity fields coming up soon. So, well, what a welcome sight those people are going to get, because those black sacks are still waiting for them. Then we have, and we all know about our drive to encourage visitors to our county. Then let's look at the issue around adult care. I hate to beg to differ, I am still being approached by vulnerable elderly people who are waiting significant times to have their basic assessments done. We have not cracked that. And I'm not prepared to tell them that actually, everything is all right, when on a daily basis, they cannot dress, they cannot wash. It's simply not acceptable. We are only asking, not the whole budget here, we're asking 3 million of 23 million. And I ask, speaking for those people who open the door every day, or who are getting up every morning and unable to cope, I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
councillor Mrs Jackie Brockway.
Thank you very much, Chairman. It's very interesting listening to the debate. The one thing I would say to councillor Morgan, of course, is that waste collection is a district function. So the black bags would be, do please refer it. I think, yes, of course, but the implication was that it came across as if it were here. Okay. Thank you. Shall I continue? Okay, thank you. I think it's important to recognise that a financial reserve is not spare money. It's just not, it's not just money to play with. It is essential for a council of this size to have a financial reserve, and ours is really not very big. Evidence has shown, in the period of this council, that when spare money becomes available, it is used. As with the children's centres, people wanted them back, the money became available, and this council responded very, very rapidly to actually see that those services were restored, simply because the money became available and it was used prudently. When we have a situation now, where in the next few years, the rate support grants of various councils are going, our own officers are responding to extensive government consultations about the change in the funding. And because there is considerable uncertainty in the next couple of years, certainly leading up to 2020, you cannot take out the financial reserves and put us at considerable financial risk. It is wrong to try to persuade residents of this county to believe that financial reserves are spare money. I would honestly recommend that if that is what you feel, you should go and talk to David Forbes and see what he is having to do. Councillor, Mrs Newton and I listened to a very interesting presentation as part of our Chairs and Vice Chairs briefing. And I would actually suggest that those who are interested might want to come to the next Value for Money meeting, where you will see all this written very carefully in the paper. But what's happening here is that people are being misled. The implication is that we have spare cash, and oh, these mean Tories are not spending it. It is wrong to do that. That is not direct truth, and it's skewing the actual truth, which is that we have to have some reserve in a county of this size. So I do urge you, please, to listen to what councillor Mayor has said about already dipping into the savings. And once that money's gone, it's gone. It's not there to use again, and isn't likely to be there for an emergency in the near future, once it's gone. Thank you.
councillor Mrs Helen Powell.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to say that I totally agree with everything the Labour Group have said today, especially Neve Jackson, councillor Neve Jackson, and everyone else. They are representatives, the same as we are, of all the people in their constituency, and they are totally in touch with them. We are the link. We are the link. I was on the Standards Committee at the District Council for a long time, when the Standards Board was in. And I was privileged to be on the immediate assessment board before any cases actually came to us. We had a checklist. And the most important thing on that checklist, to ascertain whether there was a breach of the code or not, was the fact that the public perception is paramount. Public perception is paramount. And we are dealing with public funding. It's like a charity. It has to be very, very carefully looked after, spent very, very wisely. And those people that put into the pot expect to get what they expect out of it. I don't agree with all of it going into reserves. Obviously, some, yes, but not all of it. And I think there are definitely people out there, I know there are people out there suffering. I know, in my area, I don't get too much casework. I don't get anything like the casework. I know my colleague Charmaine does. And I just feel, we're all sitting very, very privileged in this room. There's a lot of things we can afford to do and take it for granted. A lot of things. But there are people out there that we represent don't probably have half of what we have, or what we're able to have. And I think it's imperative that we think about the public perception here, and agree with the Labour amendment and vote in that way. Thank you.
councillor Redshaw, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a couple of points, really, and a little bit of information. I've just managed to glean about the Durham situation and Bishop Auckland. But I think we've got to think of ourselves in this council as the ant and the grasshopper. We're the ant, and that's the grasshopper. If you know the story, it's an ancient mythology, the ant sort of works diligently and prepares for, you know, the following year. Whereas the grasshoppers, they're fiddling away nicely with no view on the future whatsoever. It strikes me, it's very strange, that some of the people on our right here, on the left of this council chamber, if you like, have been living in a fantasy world for the last two or three years. They're totally unaware, clearly, of the spend situation on the council. They're totally unaware of the deficits that we will incur in future years, should we not be prudent with our resources. And they come up with the, you know, sort of these silly analogies. For instance, one of them about Bishop Auckland being a fantastic place to get rid of your house or waste recycling stuff, when in fact, on the 27th of October, Bishop Auckland, we'll be looking at, well, the Durham County Council, looking at closing five, six of them, reducing their household waste recycling centres to actually less than we've got in Lincolnshire. So we're, I think, I think we're doing the right thing. And I think those people need to inform themselves a little bit better than they are doing. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Is it a point of order, by councillor Mrs Charmaine Morgan?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, they hang on to their services for darn sight longer than we have. And it's under review. But may I, I would like to also pick up a point by councillor Brockway. Again, we've got the repetition of all the budgets going. It's not all, it's part of it we're looking at. We recognise need for a reserve.
councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've been an accountant for over 30 years, and I've worked in both the public and the private sector. I can remember, as a very young accountant as a student, when I could still fit into very tight jeans, which some of you may find surprising, I was, one of the first things the tutors mentioned was fundamental accounting principles, one of which is prudence. And we've heard prudence mentioned a lot. And this county council is extremely prudent. We have very, very good financial governance. We have a sound financial strategy. And I must pay great credit to P Moore and the rest of the finance team, in a very, very difficult financial year last year, and problems with Agresso, to actually have delivered a really good financial statements. Let's have a look at the underspend. Well, by the time you strip out education and the slippage on cattle receipts, it's about 2% of the total baseline service cost. It will, it will keep this council going for 10 days. Most organisations out there, whether public or private sector, if they were only on a margin of a couple of weeks, would be concerned. Also, so we're a prudent authority. Another fundamental accounting concept is going concern. What it means is, you don't spend all your money in one year, and then have nothing left in the future, when you know you're facing financial pressure, when you know you're facing reduced funding levels. Auditors, when they audit the books of any organisation, look at going concern. Can we keep going in future years? The reason why we have reserves, the level of reserves that we have, and if you actually compare our level of reserves with other similar county councils of similar size, they are comparable. We are no different to any other county council. We are, we are ensuring that we can carry on going forward. Just a few things on the Labour amendment. When accountants are looking at risk and making provision for reserves, first of all, we look to see if a risk exists. We then look for empirical evidence to support that, and then we quantify based on that. I sit on both adult scrutiny, and I also attended a recent meeting of children's scrutiny. If you look at the performance stats that have come out for the first quarter in adult scrutiny, there is no indication that there's a massive increase in service requirements. Adult scrutiny committee was told that adults can balance their budget this year. I also attended children's scrutiny as a substitute member. A few cost pressures were also raised. There is a slight increase in activity and performance. But again, we were assured by children's services that they could manage. There is no need, there is no requirement for these additional reserves. So I would ask you to support the admin group motion and reject the Labour amendment. Thank you.
councillor Hill, would you like to sum up?
I'd like to thank the councillor behind, councillor Whittington, for a very good technical assessment of the situation. I'd also like to thank councillor Mayor, who gave an excellent man in the street explanation what this is all about. I think we have this continuing problem where people don't seem to, are mixing up one-off spend with an annual requirement to save money. I've mentioned about the 40 million annual savings out of our budget every year, which is the likely outcome. If you want to look at it another way, go to page 124 on the next item, and you will see that government support to this council is projected to reduce from 159 million pounds a year this year to 104, 15 million pounds by 1920. That is basically what the problem we've got. I mean, I think also, we are putting, we haven't put everything into reserves. We are putting, the proposal here is to put 4.8 million pounds back into service delivery, a million pounds back into children's services, one and a half million pounds back into adults. So it's not true to say that we haven't done. And I think councillor Whittington was quite correct. There are no issues, and we are, there are no services in this council which are failing. There are other councils in the country which are in big trouble. We are not, in terms of service delivery. In fact, quite the opposite. We are one of the best performing councils in this country. And considering we do have a less funding than others, we have excellent children's services. We have adults, which is certainly the best in the East Midlands, probably one of the best in the country. We have people coming to highways, because we are considered best practice. We have the library situation. Again, people are now coming to saying, we've seen what you've done, we've seen how you've saved money, and you've also protected the services. So there are no services which are in crisis. I'm a little bit confused as well regarding this, because, you know, the proposal, the amendment, is not to actually spend on anything, it's to put resources into reserves. Well, we already have the reserves, we already have a contingency, and we already have the ability within services to amend their budgets according to, according.
You, for one, Martin, praised the officers. We took advice from David Forbes, and said that he suggested this was the best way of dealing with it from a technical point of view. Technical point of view, the sort of approach that councillor Technical point of view, the sort of approach that councillor Whittington spent all his time on dealing with, a technical approach. He didn't mention politics, of course, and it wouldn't be right for David Forbes to mention politics. It would have been right for Mark Whittington, you're not here as an accountant, you're here as a councillor and this is a political issue, okay? And he said this is a technical way to get across a political point.
Yes, I think we agree it is a political point, but I'm saying from a, it has been the proposal is to put money into reserves, not to actually precisely spend what, identify what the money was apart from potentially one issue in waste management. So I really don't understand why we're doing that. And of course councillor Parker himself, not so long ago, did note that we have a lot of earmark reserves, which of course are there for proposals and, you know, frankly, I think he might have been on to it something and maybe it's something where we can look at the amount of earmark reserves we have. So I find it's a bit illogical. I understand that why they are proposing...
Yeah, and I really am. But the point about creating the earmark reserves for these three things is that it would be a technical way of being able to put some money somewhere to spend immediately. Immediately, that's the point. We could have said, this, we spent it on this, this and this, but for technical purposes, not anything other than I wouldn't have done this, but this is what David Forbes suggested. I'm not disagreeing with him. I'm just saying it was a vehicle in order to say, this money is going there, then we can spend it.
Well, we'll move on because there was, you would have had the ability in the debate to indicate to all of us where you were proposing, you know, and all we got, we got a lot of things, but we actually, councillor Morgan mentioned issues and families and she's beginning every opportunity, time and time again, to identify these people, identify them to us and we will deal with it. Do not keep coming to the council and saying there are these mysterious families out there who've got, tell us what they are and that can be dealt with. She does not, she does not. Thank you. No, you have not given, sorry. Well, perhaps you can address the situation.
I will have order.
And we look forward next week, we look forward next week councillor Morgan, for you presenting the names and then of course if there are issues, they will be assessed. So I will finish now, Chairman. So basically, I recommend very strongly we do not accept the amendment and we vote through the budget. And I think as councillor Mayor says, we are, the rainy kimes are coming, thunderstorms are coming financially and we need to be prudent. Thank you.
We will take the Labour amendment first.
Thank you, Chairman. For clarity, you are voting on the Labour amendment to this motion. I'll read out the name of each member. Those voting for say yes, those voting against say no and those abstaining say abstain. Councillor Allen. Councillor Aaron. Councillor Austin. Councillor Mrs Ailing. Councillor Mrs Bradwell. Councillor Brailsford. Councillor Bridges. Councillor Mrs Brockway. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Clark. Councillor Davy. Councillor Davis. Councillor Dilks. Councillor Dodds. Councillor Ellis. Councillor Fleetwood. Councillor Hags. Councillor Hill. Councillor Hoff. Councillor Hoys. Councillor Dean Hunter-Clark. Councillor Robin Hunter-Clark. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Jesson. Councillor Jones. Councillor Kymack. Councillor Mrs Keywood-Wainwright. Councillor Kinch. Councillor Kirk. Councillor Mayor. Councillor Marfleet. Councillor Marriott. Councillor McCauley. Councillor McNally. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Murray. Councillor Mrs Newton. Councillor O'Connor. Councillor Mrs Overton. Councillor Oxby. Councillor Payne. Councillor Pepper. Councillor Palmer. Councillor Parker. Councillor Phillips. Councillor Mrs Powell. Councillor Mrs Felicity Ranson. Councillor Mrs Ranson. Councillor Mrs Rawlins. Councillor Mrs Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw. Councillor Robinson. Councillor Shaw. Councillor Mrs Smith. Councillor Mrs Sneath. Councillor Strange. Councillor Mrs Talbot. Councillor Trollope Llew. Councillor Turner. Councillor Tweedale. Councillor Webb. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Wood. Councillor Mrs Woolley. Councillor Mrs Wootton. Councillor Wootton. Councillor Worth. Councillor Mrs Ray. Councillor Young. Is there anyone whose name I haven't called?
Those in favour of the amendment, 17. Those against, 49. So it is clearly lost. So we go on to the original motion. Don't want a recorded vote? Right, good. Those in favour, please indicate. Those against? Are there any abstentions? That is carried. So we go on to agenda item number eight. Councillor Hill, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, as printed here, this is the budget update plus efficiency strategy and plan for flexible use of capital receipts. Earlier this, as part of the budget process, there was an offer made by the previous Chancellor and the previous Secretary of State, which has been carried forward, where there is an offer to councils that if we sign up to this efficiency plan and for the four-year efficiency plan, we will then, any council which does that will be protected in future from further cuts in government expenditure and at the same time they will be offered more flexibility in terms of capital receipts. So, so that you can use capital receipts, for example, to help pay for the redundancy bill. All that is set out in the paper. So I think nearly, the vast majority, I think nearly all other councils have decided that they will follow this route. And I think, again, talking about prudency, it is probably the prudent thing to do because we all know that the government has some massive problems with expenditure, not least within the NHS. So I think the prudent thing to do would be protect our, hopefully protect ourselves from further demands for further cuts beyond which we already suspect we may be in for.
Second, councillor Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm happy to second the motion and I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
councillor John Hoff.
Give up hope, all ye enter here. We've been to prison, this feels like coming here now. We're reducing, we're signing up, we're being asked to sign up to a reduction in our revenue grant, which has already been cut to the bone from 70 million in 2016/17 to 20 million four years later. Yet councillor Hill has been standing up in the chamber this morning saying how good he has been at lobbying and getting support for a better deal for Lincolnshire. How much worse can we get? This is, this is the politics of despair. You don't trust the government, so you're going to sign up for something in case it was even worse, if the government cut it even more. This is a, this is an appalling abrogation of a politician's duty to get the best deal for Lincolnshire. Agreeing to 50 million, 45 million pounds of cuts over the next four years and that's it. And we're not going to put pressure on the government to improve it because we signed up to something. It's a contract between us and the government. This is appalling. We shouldn't be doing this and we shouldn't be trusting the government about whether they do something different if we don't sign up to this. What we should be doing is using all our energy and political capital to be putting the maximum pressure on what is a new government, even though it hasn't been elected, but a new government with a new Prime Minister to recognise the problems in local government and in particular in Lincolnshire. It's time we stood up for Lincolnshire and called for proper funding, not signing up to a suicide note.
councillor Marianne Overton, please.
Thank you. I'm also concerned about signing up to something when we don't yet know where the savings are going to come from so that we can meet it. I recognise this is a political thing, I recognise it's doubtless a deal down in the corridor, whatever, to say, we need you to do your efficiency plans before you go forward, need you to sign up to all of that in order to go on to the next step. But our responsibility is of course, Lincolnshire and whatever there is going on behind the scenes, we have to make sure that what we sign up for is the best we can for Lincolnshire. I am not convinced that this is the best deal and I'm not convinced that the various threats that might be made would be carried out in that way. I do think that there is, there is still opportunity and I believe that we need to make sure we keep thumping away at it. If we sign up to four years and we don't have a budget, we don't know how we're going to make the, I thought it was 78 million, but today we heard it was 40 million per year, which would be more, I think. So around 78 million was the figure I had before. If we don't know where those savings are going to come from, so who is going without what service? We don't know that and yet we're signing up to a financial plan. So I don't think this is workable and therefore I can't support it.
Robert Parker, please.
This paper leaves most people here in this chamber caught between a rock and a hard place. And it seems to me that the question hasn't been addressed as to why we're supporting, why we're being asked to support this, other than beyond the argument that it brings certainty and a level of stability. It doesn't, it doesn't say anything about the two points that were made by councillor Hoff. The first is, if we don't sign up to it, do we trust the government to be even more draconian? And let's remember, when we talk about the government, we're talking about a conservative government, people who share the same values as the majority of people in this council chamber, people who actually, in a sense, pay lip service to the idea of local government as being important and delivering services, but are not willing to adequately fund it. Now, I'm sure that you have discussions, senior members do, with senior members of the local government conservative community. But it seems to me that the reason, the basic reason why we're being asked to sign up to this is a mixture of certainty and a lack of trust. In other words, you don't trust the government one bit to do anything other than shaft you year after year after year. And you're willing to take a deal that's on offer that almost, in that financial accounting sense, in a legal sense, that's signed up to. Because once you've got them signed up to it, they can't do the dirty on you, like they've done it consistently since 2010. So in a sense, you're asking us to help you support a notion that which is based inherently, the logic of it is a lack of trust. Now, that doesn't say much, does it, for the relationship between conservative central government and conservative local government? That the deal has to be that if we come, if you accept this paper, if you accept this amount of money, then we won't shaft you next year or the year after. Now, what sort of relationship is that? And I'd be interested in some of the senior conservatives saying how you got into this situation where you bought into an argument about certainty and a funding settlement, a level of stability, as though that is some holy grail that you're prepared to actually accept as an alternative to a decently argued, discussed, year-on-year settlement where central government listens to local government and is at least instinctive and intuitive about the way. In other words, it's the end of negotiations, isn't it? That no matter what happens, you know, in the sense of any sort of benefits that come out of the economy, a boom, we're stuck with this settlement. So in a sense, this is, the argument has been that by 2020, we should be out of the austerity period and we should be able to live a little richer. If that period of time was in 2018 and the economy did really boom, then we're not going to get any benefits out of it because it's been, this is a deal that's been done. And I just wonder why you haven't been more clear in explaining some of these nuances, rather than just sticking with the idea of certainty and a level of stability.
councillor Paul Wood.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, yeah. When I read this, I must admit, I do have some concerns about the four-year deal funded. I mean, obviously initially, if a four-year deal is a good four-year deal, then that would be great. And if it provides us all the money we wanted, that would be great. We could get on with it and we'd provide the services. The trouble is, as I see it, I've been led to believe that if we accept that four-year deal, it will give us a shortfall. I've been quoted some 70-odd million pounds over the four years. And that gives me some problems then. Why accept a deal if it doesn't actually meet our requirements? I mean, if it's going to meet our requirements, great, we should grab it because it gives certainty. But if it doesn't, then we could be in a mess. I was also a little bit strange as to why we want to accept a four-year funding deal, but we're only prepared to do a one-year budget. And I don't know whether, if that could be explained to me, why don't we then set a provisional four-year budget? We could amend it later, after the election. I know it's been said we'll set a one-year budget, then after the election we'll reset our priorities. But why not set a four-year budget now to match it? And say, my main problem is, does it give us the money we need or are we going to run into debt and have a 70-odd million pounds deficit that we can't meet? That's all, thank you.
councillor Colin Meyer, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd never sign a contract where I don't get something out of it. And we get nothing out of this. It's, there are too many unknowns for me in this, in this deal or this so-called deal. And certainly, we're all facing reelection next May and I couldn't turn around to the people on the streets next, next April and say, yep, I signed up to create these savage cuts for you, especially in light of recently I've witnessed a district councillor going to parish meetings saying, do you realise that for a band D property, this is the amount of council tax you pay and this little bit is for the district and this huge bit is for the county? People are thinking like that. They're not seeing the council tax reduced, but they're seeing the services reduced. And I personally feel I must fight for those people and would not sign this contract, especially under the terms that's being given. The implication is, sign this deal, oh boy, oh boy, we'll make you suffer. Thank you.
councillor Helen Powell, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I just got something very quickly to comment on and I couldn't possibly agree with the situation as it is. I feel that government are not listening. They're totally not listening. They know we're a rural county, the same as Cornwall. They know we're a rural county, the same as Cornwall, they know that we've been underfunded very badly for years and years and years, and this, to me, just seems like they don't give a damn. I worked in London for a while, and I know what they think to people that come from the Shires. They think we're all country bumpkins. It was just astounding that people had that sort of understanding, or the thought, they had the understanding of what we are like that come from the countryside. I regard this as a threat. I regard this as a threat in that if you don't sign up to this, there'll be no more money for you. And quite honestly, that is bullying, and whatever their idea is behind it, it's certainly not going to frighten me. We deserve better than this.
councillor Charmaine Morgan, please.
Thank you. My field of expertise in the world is change management. And one thing I can say is that significant budget cuts lead to change, and that most certainly is not going to lead to stability. It's as simple as that. When we have no idea where that money is actually going to come from, it's actually the opposite that's going to occur, uncertainty and instability, and this is, in effect, handcuffing us for the next few years, and we will be unable to negotiate or anything else once we've signed up to this. And coming from members who like to use the word prudent, I actually don't believe many of those people in this chamber do actually support this and would want us to take this route, because I have to say, I think most of us in here really do care about what happens to the people at the receiving end of this, and we all have to face our communities when we walk out of this door. So I ask, please, please do not support this. Thank you.
councillor Steve Palmer.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, I do have to share the concern that councillor Woods has raised, that we're being asked to accept an efficiency strategy plan for four years, but we don't seem to be willing to put forward a budget for four years, and I'm a bit sceptical as to why that would be. I'm also a bit sceptical about, I mean, I've heard the word in the corridors, blackmail into this being used. But what I want to talk on this one is item two, notes of flexible use of capital receipts. So it appears to me the government's very happy to see us dwindle away reserves over the years, and now they're giving us permission to sell things to supply the revenue, to keep the council going. Very nice of them, I would say, and thank you very much. So, you know, to me, I can't support this, and I will vote against it, because I don't feel it's correct for Lincolnshire and the people we represent.
councillor Neb Jackson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The days seem to have disappeared when we looked for the missing millions. Can you remember that time? We chased around, we were going to find these missing millions, and we were going to be better off. And they castigated a Labour government that actually gave them funds to do things with. Of course, we're now entering to something where there's no guarantees. This agreement can be broken by government as easily as anything. It is not a legally binding agreement. We could do our best, and they could change it tomorrow. Now, if we were going to enter into an agreement, I would enter into an agreement similar to the one that the government has just entered into with the People's Republic of China. Yeah, I'll go for that one, where we will pay through the nose in the future to get something built that formerly we could have built as a state industry, not as a state industry of another country, and getting money, and all the time when they argued against the communist regime. Now they crawl to that regime as the only way of getting money. The banks that failed, they don't say anything about, but they'll go cap in hand to those that they castigate time after time. So this agreement's not even worth the print on this sheet of paper.
councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I hope the members opposite don't mind me using my experience as an accountant to bring a bit of clarity to some of the rhetoric. All, I hope all members bring their personal experience, personal professional experience to bear in the debates before this chamber. The reason why I would ask you to support this motion is, and I agree with the comment councillor Charmaine Morgan made about change, it is a considerable period of change for local government finances, but part of change management is also risk management, and as part of it, and I've also already mentioned in my previous contribution this morning, risk management is about identifying a risk and quantifying a risk. What the four-year settlement enables us to do if we sign up to it, allows us to quantify what the level of financial risk to this authority over the next four years is, to plan prudently our budgets over the next four years to meet it. We've already heard from the benches opposite that they seem to have some problem with us carrying overspends forward from year to year. Well, if we can actually have surety of income for four years, and actually plan our budget for four years, and plan the move us in and out of reserves for the next four years, we should hopefully be able to address some of the concerns that they so evidently have. So therefore, members, please, I would urge you to accept this motion. Thank you.
councillor mrs Judy Renshaw.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not very often I stand up in this chamber, but I'm going to this morning. One of the unwritten rules when canvassing, knocking on doors, seeking votes to any council is not to make promises. You always say to the person on the door, when they ask you to do something, you will try your best to solve the problem if and when you are elected to this council, or any council. Well, that situation's going to change in spring, because now when we knock on the door and they say, can you promise me something, the answer is going to be, yes, I am going to promise you, things are going to get worse, because we have already signed up for the amount of money that this council is going to have for the next four years, so don't ask me anything, because you're going to suffer. Things will be worse and worse. Every time you get, every committee that we go to, all we get is a report of cuts. There's never any service anymore, and as a new councillor who's coming to the end of her four-year term, it's just getting harder. When I first came to this council, I hoped that I was going to be able to make a difference, and in that first couple of years, I think I did make a difference. But during the last 12 months, and I dread the next six, seven, eight months, things have got worse, and it is getting more and more difficult to help people and to make a difference, and this will just exacerbate the situation.
councillor mrs Alison Austin, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Sitting here, slap-bang in the middle of the room, I've heard a lot of very impassioned speeches by people on this side. I've heard the professional responses on the other side, but I'd be very interested to know what some of the rest of the people think. I'm in the middle of the room, I really don't know. I'm not an expert on anything financial, but I do have to justify to my residents why something can't take place, why something that they feel they need can't happen. Equally though, I defend our council and say, we just haven't got the money. Right, is it better that we sign up for something that we know we've got, or do we take a risk? And that word's just been mentioned. I just encourage, I try to provoke a little bit more response from this other side of the chamber, thank you.
councillor mrs Jackie Brockway.
Yes, we are here, listening very carefully. One of the things that emerged very prominently during the recent Brexit situation was Mark Carney, the governor of the Bank of England, repeatedly on the television, talking about certainty and lack of certainty, and having to create and put in place significant extra funding because of uncertainty. It's no good sneering at the concept of certainty, because it is a feature in financial dealings. When you've got the volatility, it increases risk of a different sort, and it is important, where it is possible, to allow certainty for future planning. If you've got an element of certainty, you can look for cost savings and reductions to deliver the services over an extended period of time more efficiently. Instead of waiting year on year to see what money you may or may not have in your budget, what you do with the contracts, if you can say, well, we can give you a contract for six months or a year, that is very different from saying to somebody, we can give you a contract for four years, and you can look then for the extra savings. It does not make any financial, or again, any sense to just look to create this uncertainty when we've seen what happens in the bigger picture in the whole country. I think also, you know, that you mentioned, my colleague here mentioned the word rhetoric. We've heard the word suicide used, I feel very inappropriately, and crawling, it's very interesting hearing a left-wing group objecting to this government being, not the government, the, yes, the government, sorry, being inclusive and working with a left-wing country. I'd have thought that you would consider that good. You know, the fact is that we're in a world market, and what this does, this gives our officers control. This is about control over this council's finances over an extended period of time, instead of having to sit there, meeting after meeting, wondering what they're going to have after, you know, for each new financial year. So I would urge everybody to support this paper, please.
I have no more speakers, so would you like to sum up councillor Hill, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think, yes, an interesting debate, yes, and it's not, it is not a straightforward issue, and I think rock and a hard place, as councillor Parker stated, would probably sum it up very well. But I think we need to be realistic in where we stand in all of this, particularly in the national finances. We do know that they are not, any political, any financial analyst will tell you, that the government's finances are not in the place they should be. They are still only halfway to eliminating the 150 billion pounds a year labour deficit, which they inherited. So we are still, there is still a 70 billion, 70 billion pounds a year deficit. Local government accounts for a quarter of all expenditure, public expenditure. So anybody who thinks that simply by saying we're not going to sign up to this, that suddenly they'll go away and that we'll be left alone, and that's the end of it, I'm afraid, are living in cloud cuckoo land. That is what has got to happen, and local government will have to take a share. That doesn't mean to say that we should be happy with the figures there on page 124. We will continue to lobby to get more money, and I'll stress again, there are other issues. There's the issue about the fair funding, where we are at the bottom of the pile. There's the issue of the localisation of business rates. There are indeed issues like the Better Care Fund and cash grants for highways maintenance, where there'll be other ways whereby the situation will change. But it is correct, and it is true, and the LGA also supported it. Labour councillors, Labour councils are signing up to this, most Labour councils, if not all Labour councils, are signing up to this, because there was a deal done at the cabinet prior to the budget last year, that, which is unprecedented, that because if people sign up and the department signed up, we are now protected. No other government department will be protected, and perhaps we'll get somewhere to the stage where other government departments will actually have to take more of the strain than we do. But we do need to continue to carry on and lobby for extra money, so I strongly urge the council, although it's not an easy decision to make, we should stick with this, be prudent, and support this efficiency plan. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
Please, say this before.
Well, I think we've definitely got enough. I'll hand it over to the chief executive.
Thank you, Chairman. As before, I will read out the name of each member, with those voting for, say yes, those voting against, say no, and those abstaining, say abstain. Councillor Allen. Councillor Aaron. Councillor Austin. Councillor mrs Ailing. Councillor mrs Bradwell. Councillor Brailsford. Councillor Bridges. Councillor mrs Brockway. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Clark. Councillor Davy. Councillor Davis. Councillor Dilks. Councillor Dodds. Councillor Ellis. Councillor Fleetwood. Councillor Haig. Councillor Hill. Councillor Hoff. Councillor Hoys. Councillor Dean Hunter-Clark. Councillor Robin Hunter-Clark. Councillor Jackson. Councillor Jesson. Councillor Jones. Councillor Keimer. Councillor mrs Keywood-Rainwright. Councillor Kinch. Councillor Kirk. Councillor Mayor. Councillor Marriott. Councillor McCauley. Councillor McNally. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Murray. Councillor mrs Newton. Councillor O'Connor. Councillor mrs Overton. Councillor Oxby. Councillor Payne. Councillor Pepper. Councillor Palmer. Councillor Parker. Councillor Phillips. Councillor mrs Powell. Councillor mrs Felicity Ranson. Councillor mrs Ranson. Councillor mrs Rawlins. Councillor mrs Renshaw. Councillor Renshaw. Councillor Robinson. Councillor Shaw. Councillor mrs Sneath. I beg your pardon, councillor mrs Smith. Councillor Strange. Councillor mrs Talbot. Councillor Trollopeau. Councillor Turner. Councillor Tweedell. Councillor Webb. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Wood. Councillor mrs Woolley. Councillor mrs Wootton. Councillor Wootton. Councillor Worth. Councillor mrs Ray. Councillor Young. The only councillor whose name I've not called. I beg your pardon, councillor Jesson.
12 against and 14 abstentions, so the motion is carried. We will now break for lunch, and we will be back here at two o'clock, please. Thank you. Thank you. We will now break for lunch, and we will be back here at two o'clock, please.
Which mark's that? Fleetwood's.
I've just turned it on and there's...
Switch, switch.
Is it, have you tried it? So I wonder why then?
Rather than support accommodation, because sixteen, and all the six things they're going to foster care, only sixteen are going to support accommodation. Foster care is more expensive than support accommodation. So currently, the nature of the kids is rather... If the nature of the kids becomes more complex, if the needs get more complex... The nature of the kids is...
That's the two cameras.
Currently, the nature of the kids is a very important one, which keeps us honest. You know, we just, we just not getting feedback. You know, it's a bit of a manual, and doing that's a challenge. Yeah, but we can just imagine if we're going to support them, it's not like...
Where's this button?
By implication, although the council agree to make a decision to support, because of the condition, in essence, it's not letting the chance to... Do you see what I mean? So...
Exactly what you mean.
So that's just, so just so that you, you know, you've got that on, if I say we're not actually in terms of, obviously, keeping what we thought we were going to say, it's not going to matter. I might lie.
Is it still peak morons?
Because all the cards to each place of the day, the comments are waiting for their actual name, that's all.
Yeah, it doesn't do it. So I don't count as much like to see, except for you.
Give us a council, we're on top of the, yeah, I don't know if it changes the sequence.
No, let me take the card out, so... Yeah, what's the console number now? How much is it? Eighty-three. Still showing eighty-three, or?
Yeah, so it's...
Yeah, we have four three, and we're... So when it's on, we find turning that on.
This one is thirty-eight, or?
That one's showing as eighty, but it's saying it's that one here that we've turned off.
So both are eighty, then?
No, one's eighty-three, I've had three numbers for that now, thirty-eight, eighty, and eighty-three.
There's a camera's right, with the microphone.
That's right, is that, that might, that is the light switch.
Well, no, because it's just turned off peak morons, so it's the problem.
Oh, right. It's the eighties. So the camera's off.
I can't really, I've preserved the camera for you.
You can change the camera, but you need to set it manually?
But on here, it's saying that it's which of David's microphone that's on, so you can change the camera position, it's, on here, it's still wrong.
I can reset it if we want, by removing the cable.
It was okay yesterday, it's not today.
Do you need to reboot it? Do you need to reboot it for the health part?
We can do it, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what you guys fear.
Should we just reset the cable, should we just reset the cables?
Just let me have a stand here and see, see what you've done.
How much more time is it? I think so, I got it stuck. It's working now. Oh, notice the, if it's the sound for peak morons, isn't it? Yeah, it's shooting.
...
We're just testing the waters to see what your reaction...
I'm letting that air sit there.
It's all good.
I'm going to turn.
Yeah, I can turn this way, I can turn. I'm going to move it, I'm going to play it from there.
Sure.
Yeah, that is good. Yeah. Oh, so I actually put it maybe on there.
Right, we will continue with item nine on the agenda. Changes to the Constitution. councillor and Mrs Jackie Brockway.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. This is in the paper. These are changes to the Constitution that are necessary because of the departure of Dr Hill. And you will see that it's an operational thing where the responsibilities are being redistributed to the various directors and officers. I would say to you, though, that pages one, four, six to the end are an extremely useful, informative little document in their own right to hang on to. Gives you all the information you need to do who does what, so that's a great time saver. I would ask you to support this, please. Thank you.
I'd like to second that motion, Mr Chairman.
Body on the screen to speak on this one. Three, two, one, you've lost your chance. Right. Do you wish to sum up then, Mrs Brockway, councillor Mr Brockway? Right. All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? So it was unanimous, right. You might have noticed that the Vice Chairman isn't here. He is doing civic duty. He is doing the citizenship ceremony. I wish they find another name for that. Down at Boston. So he is on official duties. Right. So now we're on to item ten. Motions. Before we start this, is there an amendment to the first motion or not? No. Right. So if there isn't an amendment, we don't need to change the rules of proceedings. The rules of debate are all set out here. And I hope everybody has read them. So I'll call on councillor Wotton to oppose the motion.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. You have the motion before you. Mr Chairman, on the 3rd of September, a rally was held in Grantham. It was estimated by the police that up to 3,000 residents marched in protest at the temporary closure of A and E Grantham Hospital. We all marched in the pouring rains. ULHTs say that the overnight closure from 6:30 to 9:00 AM is temporary for three months from 17th of August on safety reasons. However, residents are suspicious and believe that this is just another backdoor downgrade. Included in that rally were county and district councillors from all political parties, including leader councillor Martin Hill and leader of SKDC councillor Bob Adams and MP Nick Bowles. The organizer of that rally was Jodie Clark, supported by councillor Charmaine Morgan, chairman of SOS Grantham Hospital. I wish to thank everyone for their support in attending on that rally on that day. Mr Chairman, I've looked on the Facebook page last night and there are nearly 25,000 people have signed a petition against the closure of Grantham A and E. And nearly 8,000 have signed to fighting for Grantham Hospital Facebook page. Ten years ago, I attended a rally in Grantham against similar cuts to the hospital. Since then, we've lost the maternity unit and now some patients, instead of attending Grantham A and E, are sent by ambulance to other hospitals. Grantham is a growing town, the largest in Lincolnshire, with a population expected to grow from 41,000 to 60,000 by 2036. 14,000 new homes are being planned and residents are saying that the trust should retain the services to serve a growing town. Mr Chairman, A and E before the overnight closure saw nearly 30,000 patients over a period of one year, of which 5,000 needed to be admitted. 4,550 of those arrived by ambulance via 999 calls. Many of you know that three months ago, I suffered a heart attack and I was seen by Grantham A and E at 1:30 in the morning. I was admitted and stabilised and two days later transferred to Lincoln Heart Unit. I wish to place on record my thanks to the doctors and nursing staff who cared for me both at Lincoln and, sorry, at Grantham Unit. When I was transferred to Lincoln, I was shocked to find out that I was only in one of two ambulances on duty on a Friday night. Now, Friday is one of the busiest nights of the week for emergency services. This cannot be right. Mr Chairman, Lincoln Hospital cannot cope with this extra work. The trust highlights in this month's report, which records in their own words, further deterioration in A and E waiting times, down in July to 78.56%. Lincoln Hospital are having problems filling shifts, which means more patients are waiting longer in A and E. At Grantham, doctors were keen to take more patients at our A and E to help, but this was dismissed by the trust as it was not acceptable for patients to travel to Grantham. Yet it was all right for patients from Grantham to travel to Lincoln. Really strange. The trust also encourages patients to see their local GP, but many surgeries in Grantham, it can take up to four weeks to get an appointment. Residents believe that A and E has been sacrificed to save Lincoln's A and E. This is meant to be temporary. And temporary must mean temporary. The trust has repeated over and over again, Grantham has a bright future, a secure future, but the community wants a service which they've paid for to be provided locally. And I fully support this call. Mr Chairman, both Linda and I have attended Grantham board meetings for the past nine years, asking questions on behalf of the public and staff and scrutinising areas of concern. On Wednesday, we met with the chairman Dean Fathers and put to him questions which the public have given us. He wanted to ensure us that he is keen to engage with the community and listen to their views. Summing up, Mr Chairman, cuts can happen to all hospitals, not just in Grantham. Therefore, I hope that all members will support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Charmaine Morgan, you are...
...to have the equivalent time to councillor Wotton on the grounds to demonstrate all parties' support for this motion.
Before, and according to the officers, it is against the Constitution. If you would like to argue with the two gentlemen on my left, I have been informed that it is not allowed.
It's allowable if the council wished to suspend standing orders.
Right. If the council wished to suspend standing orders. All right, that is agreed. Councillor Charmaine Morgan, you have a maximum of six minutes.
Thank you very much.
Rewrite your speech again, Chair.
As councillor Wotton indicated, actually, we've both been campaigning for the services at Grantham Hospital for a very long time. And I'd like to actually welcome this opportunity for us to work, for the first time really, collaboratively, cross-party. We've also been working with Unison and Fighting for Grantham Hospital Facebook focus, 7,000 of them who are following every day everything that's going on with this campaign. We strongly condemn the decision by ULHT, which was supported by CCG to close Grantham Hospital, 14 and a half hours out of 24, without full consultation and with one week's notice. There were serious issues identified regarding the process and how it's been implemented have also been identified. And these are resulting now in a potential judicial review and a complaint to the Parliamentary and Health Service Ombudsman. Grantham Medical Advisory Committee have called for a vote of no confidence in Dr Carpeedia, the ULHT medical officer who has been leading this work. It's become clear the closure has been pushed through as a precursor to the downgrading of this Level One Hybrid Level Three Accident and Emergency Unit to a walk-in Level Three Centre. The restoration of the Level One services, the resuscitation and stabilisation role, as councillor Wotton's personally experienced, is absolutely vital, given the minimum 23-mile journey the most seriously ill patients will have to travel. ULHT's arguments just do not stand up to scrutiny. And some argue that the CCG and NHSI should have scrutinised their arguments far more, especially in relation to the role of the A and E unit, which they have frequently described as only Level Three, in order to win the argument with the media and the public. The impact on EMAS already under pressure, as we know, and has been a subject in this chamber. Local people are now reporting delays of three to four hours and non-arrival of ambulances at times. So the question there is, why did the EMAS CEO approve this change? There is no evidence to support ULHT's claims of heroic efforts to recruit medium-grade doctors prior to the closure, their main argument. There were no issues at Grantham A and E beforehand, which actually has a good record. There were, as has been indicated, issues at Lincoln and Boston. And we totally and utterly support that those hospitals should be fully staffed. And there needs to be an urgent resolution of those issues. But closing Grantham A and E is not the answer. As my mother would say, two wrongs do not make a right. There is now more pressure on Lincoln Hospital and there are indications, I have been advised, that in fact waiting times have subsequently increased at Lincoln as a result of the extra work they now face. Independent evidence clearly shows that there is an increased risk, so much for making it safer, to critically ill patients for every mile travelled. And that's been completely admitted from the ULHT report to NHSI. Again, patients in the Grantham area in need of urgent resuscitation or stabilisation will die before they get to another A and E unit. And I've had that straight from the words of paramedic crews actually trying to save those people's lives and put in an intolerable position. At night, 999 patients who come to the A and E unit, and I have to say the change has been made so quickly that all the signs still tell the public it's a 24-hour A and E unit, will receive a wall-mounted telephone with two buttons, 111 and 999. And they only added the 999 after I pointed out to them it was an A and E unit and just maybe patients might need urgent care when they arrive there. There is no shelter, no seat, no heating and no security for potentially extremely sick patients who may arrive on that doorstep. Even the changes which have been proposed do not address this into the early hours. The temporary status of the closure, which has been quite rightly picked up by councillor Wotton, has been challenged. The Grantham Medical Advisory Committee argue the recruitment target set by ULHT to reinstate the Level One A and E service is considered unachievable in the current national climate. Another source has advised me that it hasn't been achieved, in fact, in the last 10 years. So what on earth makes them think they can achieve it in the three-month timeframe that's the region you're talking about? ULHT are actively undermining the future training of doctors at Grantham Hospital and also directing doctors from there into Lincoln. So again, this completely contradicts their statements that they're trying to get things back up and running as fast as possible. The provision of a shelter place to stay, restoration of the minor injuries unit is welcome. Thank you, Martin, who's not here at the moment. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. But it cannot undermine the call for the restoration of the life-saving acute services needed now 24/7 at that site. Until it is restored, 120,000 people in the catchment area of Grantham, 120,000 people remain at risk. Thank you.
Councillor Rosie Kirk.
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me. I'd like to support the motion. When the British were asked on a national poll what made them feel proud to be British, the number one was the NHS. In 1939, my uncle unfortunately died as a result of my grandparents not being able to afford a doctor. If he'd been born 10 years later, he would have survived. That's how important the National Health Service is to the people of Lincolnshire and this country. We know that the reasons for what is happening at the moment is complex. There are issues with the trust, but there are also issues in the NHS with funding, not getting the resources that it needs. And in Lincolnshire, we know there has been issues with recruiting staff. And that is something that needs to be tackled and looked at. I've heard that there is thoughts of trying to get a medical centre up and running in Lincolnshire. And I think this would, a training centre for doctors and encouraging that, I think that would be a good way forward to get more staff into Lincolnshire and to retain staff. So we know we have those issues as well. But we can't get away from the fact that the NHS is suffering from cuts, it's suffering from underfunding, and it needs investment. And we need to be honest with our electorate about the future of the NHS. And it needs to have investments put back in there. And that's all part of what we should be doing as a council. So I would fully support this motion to retain, to get services back and uprunning at Grantham. And we should be thinking about investing... And we should be thinking about investing in the future for the NHS and stop all this continuing underfunding. And we should look at staffing recruitment issues. Thank you.
councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I urge everybody in the chamber today, regardless of political party or persuasion, to support this motion. I want to pay particular thanks to both councillor Ray Wotton and councillor Charmaine Morgan, and also councillor Linda Wotton for locally driving the campaign, which is a genuine non-political all-party. And people of no party at all, for that matter. And also particularly thank Jodie Clark, who runs the Fighting for Grantham Hospital campaign, who does some great work as well. My first experience of Grantham Hospital came in 1966, when at the age of three, Grantham Hospital saved my life when I was admitted as a three-year-old child with a urinary tract infection and renal failure. So I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Grantham Hospital. And therefore, I will do everything in my power to fight to my very last breath to protect Grantham Hospital and to get full services restored. My second real sort of exposure to Grantham Hospital, and I know I'm talking about being an accountant again, I'm sorry. I actually did work as an accountant at Grantham Hospital in the mid-1990s. And at that time, Grantham Hospital was truly independent. It was an independent trust hospital before it joined ULHT. It had a small budget of around £25 million, but it provided a full range of services and came in on budget every year. Since the merger with ULHT, that's when the problems have started. That's when services have gradually been reduced, cut back, and we're now into the situation where we're back again having to fight to try and save A&E services at Grantham Hospital. One of my other concerns is that A&E services also support other services within hospitals. It's your operating theatres, it's your general surgery, it's your trauma and orthopaedics' department, it's your x-ray. If you lose, it's a domino effect. You lose one, it knocks them all down in turn. And before you know where you are, you're down just to a cottage hospital. So really, I would urge you all to support it and ignore the politicians. Just look on the Facebook page and see all those thousands of people from Grantham, people from all walks of life, who walked in the pouring rain on the 3rd of September to actually show their support for the hospital. People of all ages, young children, there were people in wheelchairs, everybody. Grantham is 100% behind this campaign. And I would urge every single member in this chamber this afternoon to get 100% behind us as well. Thank you very much indeed.
Before we go any further, the screen is absolutely full of people wishing to speak. I do wish that instead of concentrating on, being general about the NHS, they would be specific to Grantham. And if it has been said before, please be as brief as possible. councillor Robert Palmer. Parker, sorry.
I support this motion.
Thanks, Chairman. I welcome councillor Ray Wotton's motion, and I pay tribute to the work of him, Charmaine Morgan, Linda and Mark, and I'm sure others in Grantham, who are doing what they were elected to do and standing up for local services that people need across the board. I've got to say, and forgive me, Chairman, but I was, as you know, I was a TA soldier and I was in five Royal Anglian. And I was in Germany one year on camp. And one Royal Anglian was there, and two Royal Anglians was on the same base. And every night in the soldiers' mess, there were almighty fart bust-ups between one Royal Anglian soldier and two Royal Anglians. They went at each other like cats and dogs. And then towards the end of my time there, the Black Watch arrived. And all of a sudden, one Royal Anglian joined with two Royal Anglians. And they said, we're Anglians together, mate. And they went and got the Black Watch. So it's good that we can work together sometimes, isn't it? And so I thought it was good to see councillor Hill, our leader, our council leader, on the media when this first blew up, condemning Grantham Hospital for locking the doors overnight of the A&E at a week's notice without even consulting this council. And that was, I congratulate him on doing that. It's good to see Martin, his colleagues and everyone right across this chamber fighting and standing up for the NHS for those who need it, when they need it. But the NHS is at breaking point, there's no doubt, as we will have seen all of you on the news last night on BBC News. It is absolute crisis, there's one story after the other about the crisis that they are in. It's not just A&E waits, it's waiting for operations right across the country. There's a junior doctors dispute that is ongoing. But there is an opportunity in the NHS, isn't there? You may remember that in the European Union referendum, the Leave campaign, supported by the Conservative group, promised £350 million a week extra for the NHS if the nation voted Brexit. Well, the nation did vote Brexit. So could I ask the leader if he would now have a word with his good friend, the Secretary of State for Health, and ask him if he could direct the first week's savings from Brexit of £350 million to Grantham Hospital? Thank you.
I was slightly worried as we were discussing health when councillor Dilks said the Anglians got the Black Watch. Councillor Colin Muir, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had personal experience of Grantham A&E when I lived in Grantham and so has my wife. And we were very grateful that it was there, especially my wife, she had a big problem. And they saved her. To divert just a little bit, Chairman, despite your advice, we're seeing the gradual demolition of health services in this part of England. We're seeing with Grantham that they've figured it out, changed the rules. You'll need so many operations a year before you're qualified to operate at Glenfield. Oh, you don't do that many. Right, let's close it. We're busy as heck with all the A&Es. We're far, far lower than the targets at Lincoln County A&E. Was it 78% now? And what do we do as a consequence of that? Let's close Grantham A&E. Guess what will happen to Lincoln A&E? And we all know the problems we've got with the ambulance services round here. And we shouldn't ignore all those ancillary issues. I have a friend, she fell, had a compound fracture in her ankle, dislocated ankle, which means you're going to lose it if they don't get to you quick, because you get gangrene if you don't relocate a dislocated ankle. It took the ambulance two and a half hours to get to her. She lives in Grantham. She was a mile from the A&E. So all those other issues, we mustn't forget, you know? But we mustn't forget to support the A&E at Grantham. I'm sorry that I couldn't get to the march, I was on another march. But, too many marches. But I support both ends of the motion. I mean, I don't know whether, Chairman, you're going to actually take the amendment instead of the original motion or what, but I vote for them both.
There isn't an amendment. There is just the motion, as councillor Charmaine Morgan seconded councillor Wotton's motion. There is no amendment. councillor Richard Davies, please.
I'm not sure which microphone I'm meant to be using.
Well, it's all right, you're not lighting up Pete Mawson now.
Okay, fantastic, sorry. I want to be brief. I think it's really important that the council chamber recognises the degree of feeling in the town. I mean, my view is that many services have gone down, not least maternity services, which is in heyday and on the 14th of November 1978 saw a fabulous birth and since then has rapidly gone downhill. But joking aside, what we have seen is managed incompetence from ULHT. What we continue to see is misinformation and, as Colin rightly points out, an adjustment of reality to suit a political motive. I will disagree wholeheartedly with some of the comments we've seen about the broader problems the NHS has. Because for me, why is it that there are excellent hospitals in the UK and then yet in my hometown, we're seeing this kind of mistake made, not only with some services, but a whole range of services? I think where this campaign is strong is because it focuses on that very important accident and emergency function. It does not make any sense, however you spin it, however you dress it, however you quote statistics, that a growing town the size of Grantham perched next to the A1, next to the East Coast Main Line, with a huge catchment area, is unable to sustain an A&E. And what I cannot get my head around is the thought processes that sit amongst these, frankly, unaccountable, invisible people who are making these decisions. And as I'm afraid, as we seem to open a newspaper every week, under less and less consistent manner. And people are now rightly questioning some of the logic and even some of the figures behind them. So I would ask everybody in the chamber, regardless of whether or not, like me, you were born there or whether you aspire to have been born there, the fact of the matter is, our town needs this facility and it is not right that we're losing it.
I am closing the list now because we have got, unless you want to be here till 6 o'clock, which I presume you don't, councillor Linda Wotton.
Thank you, Chairman. And I do apologise if this is a repeat of what a lot of people have said, but, Mr Chairman, Grantham Hospital was built in 1874 on land donated by Lord Brownlow to benefit the people of Grantham. It was a standalone hospital and it now comes under the ULHT umbrella. We have a population of 41,000 plus and the hospital serves the wider community of 120,000 people. We are the largest town in Lincolnshire, but the lowest denominator within the ULHT, therefore an easy target. Grantham lost its Children's Services years ago and most recently its Midwifery Unit. And now I fear it is under threat again. The night-time closure is meant to be a temporary measure, but I fear the dastardly deed is done. Consultants and clinicians do work and live in our area, and there were no safety issues in Grantham. Our staff have been stolen to back up services in Lincoln. We, the people of Grantham, want them back, along with our fully functioning A&E service. The loss of A&E has a knock-on effect on other services, meaning another downgrade. Therefore, I support the motion. Thank you.
Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, I, of course, do support the motion and I think most of the things I would have said have been said just in reply to councillor Morgan's point. Yes, there is some, we have got now, it has been confirmed that we're being out of our service till 11.30, that finally been confirmed by NHS. So that in itself tells you something that it took so long for them to actually get around to confirming it. But it is very true, that is a particular issue, that should in no way take away the campaign. This is not a substitute, this is merely a common sense place we need to be, but we still need to keep the campaign up for the A&E.
councillor John Hoff.
This has many reminders of the situation in Louth, where we lost our maternity after my two children had been born. And then we found that they had changed and downgraded the A&E. But we do have the A&E still 24 hours due to the participation of GPs, along with the hospital staff. And I think, while obviously supporting the motion, I think there are some issues behind this, that while we argue for this, we have to recognise there are some real problems in the health service, through the lack of funding from the government, through the problems of cutting back on training of doctors and nurses. ULHT recruited 150 nurses from Portugal and Spain, they've all gone two years ago, we have none left. It is a huge problem. And unless we address those problems, whatever we do in the short term with Grantham, we're going to be hit again in other places, whether it's in Boston or in Lincoln or wherever. We have to try and find a solution to the overall problem if we are not only to sort this one out, but to support the NHS in the future. And I think, you know, we are in danger of putting our head in the sands but raising our hands up to support the motion, while not looking at what really needs to be done in terms of supporting the NHS in the future. Because that's the issue, you know, when we know that we have suffered as a council through cuts, but the NHS has suffered too. You know, from a situation where they have a growth of 4% a year in demand, there has been a level situation of funding. So in effect, they've faced over the last six years a real cut of something like 15% to 20%. And yet we are expecting people and the ULHT in Lincolnshire to carry on as if that hadn't happened. So we need to be fighting at a national level as well as at a local level to try and ensure there is proper funding for the health service in Lincolnshire, along with proper training for doctors and nurses within this country, so that we can cover the gap that poor ULHT is finding. It's not just in Grantham they're having these problems, they're having it in Lincoln and Boston. And that's part of the thing with Grantham, is that this has had a knock-on effect on Grantham and they've taken the decision to remove it from Grantham quite unacceptably, while they're trying to deal with a situation across the trust over the whole of Lincolnshire. So we have to deal with the overall problems and not just put our hands up today to support Grantham, which is absolutely the right thing to do. But we have to do more than that. We have to go back to the government and say, look, it is not good enough that funding is being in effect cut from the NHS, because this is the effect in Lincolnshire.
councillor Neb Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. When I first started servicing the NHS workers, admittedly in the Maintenance Department, there was South Lincolnshire Health Authority and North Lincolnshire Health Authority. We've now got a united health authority. Doesn't seem as though there's any unite that's actually occurred. What we need to see is a sensible way of looking how we use the resources. It's not unknown for people to work in facilities but being required to move to other facilities when the necessity arises. And I can't see why that cannot apply to some of the medical professionals within Lincolnshire. We are a county that doesn't have the infrastructure that many other counties have got. Anybody that's been to QMC, anybody that's been to that huge facility in Mansfield will see that the county of Nottinghamshire has got all the services to service the population. We are at the poor end of that situation. I do say to colleagues, and we've discussed it at Economic Development Committee, in the future, we possibly do need to look at our university facility to see whether or not we can move into the medical training field. I know it's a difficult one, I know we've got many hurdles to get over to get there. But there is a clear indication that if you train people in a locality, a good majority seem to stay. Now, we've got wonderful things, as we keep saying, about Lincolnshire. We need to get people used to our county, what we've got, the benefits. But I believe that the people in Grantham do need this 24-hour cover. We often refer to those critical illnesses, and one of the critical illnesses we often forget is those with acute mental health issues that turn up at A&E when they're at real risk to themselves and on occasions at real risk to other people. Those are the ones that we don't always take account of. But nevertheless, we have to be there to provide life-saving services to all. This downgrading of Grantham sits very ill with me in a county of our size.
councillor Mrs Marion Overton, please.
Thank you very much. This service serves not only Grantham, but a much wider area, very much a rural area. And that's why it is so significant and needs to be retained. The best way of providing services is to provide as close as possible to people, because that way you're going to be most successful. If we're asking people to go much greater distances in ambulances, there will be, as has been pointed out, there will be deaths and there will be much greater problems following on from that. My concern also is the knock-on effect, not just on our residents, but also indeed on the council. We do provide public health, we're partly responsible for reducing accidents. Care, if people don't get the attention at the right time, as has been pointed out, the care with much greater that's needed after that. And that has costs both personally and to our council. I do think we need to look at the whole picture as well. The ambulances have been raised. I've also had the experience of sitting with somebody for an hour and a half in Grantham, at Grantham Station, on the floor with a broken hip for sure, and we didn't know what else wrong, since she'd hit her head as she went down. So waiting for an ambulance all that time. So it is a serious picture. The other point, I think, is what other cuts are in the sustainability transformation plans proposed? Are there other things there? Is this in there? We don't know. We do need to attack this because it is a loss of a local important service, but also I think we need to be much careful, very careful about what's coming down the line. Thanks a lot.
Councillor Mrs Alison Austin, please.
Thank you, chairman. A someone from Boston, obviously I haven't had to make use of Grantham Hospital, but I'm well aware what solidarity we received, what support in Boston from certainly the coastal part of East Lindsay, when our own services were threatened. And although we're not out of the woods, I think that we certainly in Boston would want to show our support to the people of Grantham. The problem with our rural county, with our out-of-the-way part of the world, we're not on the way to anywhere, is well-known, isn't it? That recruitment and retention of doctors and medical personnel is very, very difficult. We obviously welcome anything that the university can do, but in the meantime, we must campaign to keep a 24-hour A and E service in Grantham. We can't rely solely on an air ambulance to take extreme cases. We need to have means of getting people to their own local hospital 24/7. Thank you.
Councillor Steve Palmer?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Can I declare an interest being a live responder and part of EMAS when I'm activated, please? Right, first of all, I'd like to say that I fully support Grantham councillors in this and I do hope those same Grantham councillors, when we find out the full impact of any assessments being done for Lincolnshire hospitals across the way, will offer that support to others when it's needed. I would be happy to stand shoulder to shoulder with Grantham councillors and Grantham people. You may say, why, when I'm way over in Sutton-on-Sea Oldford? And the reason is that we have many people in Sutton-on-Sea that I know of actually have been referred to Grantham and they go to Grantham. So Grantham is just as important to us way over there as it is to the Grantham people, I suspect. I'm very concerned that once, as one of the councillors has already said, you have a knock-on effect. If you close something, it knocks on somewhere else. And my immediate thought is it will knock on to the ambulance service. Longer runs, et cetera, more time in ambulances, more time getting somewhere, and then the impact on where they're going as well, if it's increasing their workload. I attended, just as a passerby, a cardiac arrest three weeks ago without any equipment and I managed to get that lady back. I still had to wait half an hour for a red one call ambulance to come to my assistance. I had no kit with me. Luckily, we had a defibrillator because the community had paid out for one. I didn't actually have to use it because I got her back just through normal CPR. But the point is, if I wasn't there or somebody in the community who knew how to do that CPR, that lady will not have survived. Half an hour would have been no good at all for that lady. You've got three, five minutes before the brain starts to die, eight minutes heart starts to die. You need to be there quick. So these are all the concerns in the background that I see day to day in what I do as a volunteer. And I'm not knocking the ambulance service because I know a lot of ambulance technicians, paramedics, ECAs, and they all are committed personnel and they work flat out. They often come on call when they're not on call, when they're having a lunch break, et cetera. The word goes out that they're wanted, they react even in the middle of a lunch break or a toilet break or whatever. So yes, I fully support Grantham. I hope everyone in this council chamber will support Grantham cross-party and I hope everyone will realise that we have a storm possibly coming up soon. Thank you.
Councillor Mrs Christine Talbot, please.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I'd like to support the motion that was put by councillor Watton and seconded by councillor Davy. I was in, sorry, I'm reading off the sheet, sorry, sorry Charmaine, I apologise. I was on holiday in France and on the 10th of August received an email from an officer from this authority breaking the story. But I was ahead of the game because I'd already seen it online on the Echo. So I arranged from France for matters to be organised, and it will happen on Wednesday, that United Lincolnshire Hospitals Emergency Care Service in relation to Grantham is being brought to the committee as a matter of urgency. And there is also scheduled, that was in the work programme, of an urgent care update, which also includes A and E. Well, for those of you who have probably been conscientious, although they were only posted out and reported on Tuesday, the large amount of papers in relation to this particular item will notice that I, having asked in August for the paper that was to come to us to be completely full of data as to all these decisions, et cetera, they actually have done some monitoring and they've only done 13 days, so we actually haven't got a month's worth of data to look at. But I know the cutoff point, because it's only a temporary closure, was yesterday and they had an opportunity, which we've heard about today, that they're hoping on Monday to extend the hours from 6:30 to 11:30 with a rotor of GPs within that area. But quite frankly, that isn't good enough because I was hoping that we would actually be able to deal with it more actively by actually suggesting that this was a substantial development or variation to the service. But I understand there's a little loophole and it's called patient safety. So if they close something temporarily under patient safety, it means that they've got that leeway in order to avoid a referral to the Secretary of State, which we have the powers on health scrutiny to do after mediation. But I also understand, after three months, if they haven't recruited staff and provided a better service, they can extend the three months for another three months, which then prohibits us from actually dealing with it how I think it should be dealt with. Because quite frankly, there should have been a full consultation about this, not an arbitrary decision by a trust board to decide to close it without actually speaking to anybody about it. I could talk for hours, but I'm trying to keep my powder dry for Wednesday when the gentleman who is the medical director will be at the committee along with the CX and we're hoping to get some proper answers in public that you can all hear about. So I welcome, I know you've told me to hurry up, I welcome all the campaigning that's gone on and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be with you, but well done.
Councillor Mrs Sue Worrley?
Thank you, chairman. On Sunday at your civic service, councillor Judy Renshaw and myself were having a conversation and it was councillor Renshaw that said to me, what are we going to do about our health situation? I think I said, Judy, something along the lines of what we should be doing. I can do it without the mic, I can shout if you like. For those of you that didn't hear, on Sunday I went to the civic service and councillor Renshaw, Judy Renshaw and I were talking about various things and Judy said, what are we going to do about the health service in Lincolnshire? And I said to her something like, well, we should all be working together because it should be a cross-party issue and we both agreed. It wasn't a difficult thing to do, was it Judy, at all? And so on that basis, I would urge everybody to support the motion. I think it's pretty evident that everybody will support the motion. But I would also like to say, I think that what we can and possibly should be doing is that I think our own local NHS providers know what a difficult situation they're in and we should actually be supporting them to provide that service by campaigning at a national level to say, look at Lincolnshire, it is not like a London inner city where, it's not like inner city London where there's a hospital every couple of miles, we are a very rural area. So let's just work with and look towards working with our NHS providers and being that message for them at a national level. As I mentioned, I hope everybody supports this motion.
So that actually clears the board, so councillor Ray Watton, would you like to sum up?
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Thank you all, all those speakers who have supported the motion, which is most appreciated. Back in 1999, I nearly lost my life on duty, so I'm, again, as three months ago, really appreciative and supportive of the NHS. And we moved 12 years ago from Leyton Buzzard, a similar sized town that had no hospital. So this is why I'm really passionate to keep what we've got in Grantham. During a debate, I've received an email from Dean Fathers, the chairman of the ULHT, which he says is committed to delivering safe, effective, caring and responsive services to Grantham. And he also announces in his email, which I'm quite happy to share with you, that he's recruited a middle-grade doctor and also has another doctor in the wings waiting for approval for Grantham stroke Boston. So that's really good information to hear. And I do hope that the ULHT get the message from us that we're all against the closure of night time A and E in Grantham. Now, I know, and Charmaine will agree with me, that you're all welcome to a further rally on the 29th of October in Grantham, which I'm sure most of the town will turn out again. Mr Chairman, thank you again, members, for your support and I move the motion.
Thank you. Shall we go to the vote? All those in favour, please indicate. Well, that is unanimous, so there are nobody against and no abstentions. Right. I don't think the next one will be quite so unanimous. Councillor Dilks, councillor Phil Dilks?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I look forward to a good debate. I'm with David Cameron on this one. Parents don't want their children segregated into sheep and goats. But Michael Gove's former adviser put the case best for me on Conservative Home this week, saying this. One of the most conclusive findings in education research is the fact that grammar schools are great for the children that go to them and terrible for the vast majority of children who don't. And no matter what's done to mitigate that, increasing selection can only result in more unfairness, poorer overall educational attainment and entrenchment of social division in our communities. The evidence shows that selection for the few means rejection for the many and snuffs out real choice. Now, it may, or it may not surprise you to know that I failed my 11+. It surprised my teachers, I've got to say, but they never knew that in the exam essay of Visit to Piccadilly Circus, I wrote about the clowns and the trapeze artists. So I was sent to Robert Pattinson, secondary modern, it could have been worse. We lived at 51 Airwood Crescent, North Iceman. Had we lived a few doors down at number 41, my fate would have been Sinseal Bank School in Lincoln. At least Robert Patt put kids like me in for the same GCSEs that grammar kids took and I eventually picked up nine decent O-levels. Ironically, that was eight more than my sister got, who passed her 11+ and graduated from the grammar school with one O-level in art before she became a hairdresser. So I suppose I did okay for an 11+ failure, but I'll never, ever forget the cutting, devastating reaction of the Lincoln Careers Officer, a Mr Peck, when I told him I wanted to be a journalist. I can still see him now looking at me like I was something that the dog had done on his shoe before he said to me, journalism is a career for grammar school boys, not for secondary boys like you. Think again. I was feeling pretty unworthy when I started work as a labourer's mate at Lincoln Brickworks in Downhill Waddington, but I did manage to train as a journalist eventually, thanks to the former Lincolnshire Standard Group. And I have to say, the amazing career that journalism gave me in this country and abroad was despite the millstone of failing an exam when I was 11 years old. Have we moved on in 50 years? Yes, we have, but only in some parts of Lincolnshire. The local school where I now live, Deepings Comprehensive, is an all-comers-all-ability school with a history of producing better results than some of our selective grammars. I'm pleased that neither of my daughters took the 11+ and Deepings Comp equipped them very well for university and helped shape them into the amazing talented schoolteachers they are today. The point is, children of all abilities can be more comfortable and actually excel in well-funded, disciplined, professionally-led, truly non-selective, comprehensive schools. But in parts of Lincolnshire today, selection still devastates young lives. We all tell our children and our grandchildren, don't we, to reach for the stars, they can do it if only they work hard, only for them to discover at age 11 that they're a failure. Now we have a government that wants to go back half a century, promising to expand choice, is what they're saying, by giving every school the chance to become a selective school. Look, I'm only a secondary modern boy, but I know an oxymoron when I see one. Selection destroys choice. Look, if Deepings or other comps go selective, the majority of local children who fail the exam to get in face getting on a bus to be educated in some other community in a secondary modern or whatever new name we'll give to Schools for Failures. Choice, it's a myth, it don't work. And what will that do to the home-to-school transport? Pete Moore, where are you? Now, that's another myth. The evidence from Lincolnshire shows beyond doubt that selection is a glass ceiling against social mobility, not for it. Today, almost 12% of pupils in Lincolnshire secondary moderns are entitled to free school meals, the widely accepted measure of deprivation, but just 3% of Lincolnshire grammar school pupils are entitled to free school meals. That tells you that children from the poorest backgrounds in Lincoln are four times more likely to end up in a secondary school, secondary modern school than a grammar, even when they live within the catchment area of the grammar school. As Mr Gove's former adviser says, the poorest children in Tower Hamlets do better than the average for all pupils in Lincolnshire. Are we proud of that? That's Tower Hamlets, London's East End, one of the poorest boroughs in the country with no selection, getting better results than we get overall. In Lincolnshire, we have secondary modern schools where 60% of the children get five A to Cs in GCSE. That's good. But is it not a scandal that we also have secondary moderns where 19% of pupils, that's less than one in five, get the same five A to Cs, including maths and English? That's the education postcode lottery that we've got in Lincolnshire. Rejection for the many, snuffing out choice and trenching social division. Selection in Lincolnshire already fails too many of our young people. My grandchildren and yours deserve better. Please put their future first by voting to reject more selection and segregation. Thank you very kindly.
Councillor John Hoff?
As councillor Dilks has said, I mean, selection means rejection. You can't avoid it. Some, maybe 20%, get to pass it, but 80% don't. So what happens to them? And the reality is... And the reality is, is that in selective areas, the issue of achievement is worse. We know that the gap between disadvantaged children achieving five good GCSEs at A star of English and Maths widens in selective areas compared to non-selective areas. What evidence are you thinking about to actually want to make that worse for 80% of our children than the situation they face today? The figures show that in selective areas, the average, and this is the way they measure it, the percentage point gap between disadvantaged children and their non-disadvantaged peers is 37. Across England as a whole, it's only 28. In Lincolnshire, we're not as bad as 37. We're not as bad as Buckinghamshire and Kent, perhaps partly because in Lincoln we have some non-selective schools. But we're still up there. We're the worst in the East Midlands, 32.4, 32.5. And over the last few years, we struggled and struggled and struggled to try and close that gap, and we're still doing. But we find that with the more academies, they don't want to talk to us about how to close that gap. They don't want to come to the training to try and see how we can close that gap. Are we really suggesting that this failure in Lincolnshire should be repeated right across the country? That we should actually widen the achievement gap for children who are disadvantaged compared to their peers? But that's what seems to be the, the theory behind what the Conservative government is actually trying to introduce. And it's not just about achievement, of course. We also know it's about social mobility, or that's what the government claims. Yet, as councillor Dilks has pointed out, what we face in a situation in Lincolnshire is a tiny minority of disadvantaged children actually go to grammar schools, the vast majority go to secondary moderns. That's not the kind of education or society that we should be wanting or supporting as a nation. We want every child to achieve their best, whether it's academically or whether it's vocational. We do not want to go back to the 1940s and 50s where 80% of children were rejected, only 20% achieved. We should reject this, we should oppose it, we should tell the government we don't want it, and we need to do that now.
Councillor John Marriott.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My teaching career began in a boys' grammar school in Nottingham in 1966 and following jobs in Canada, Germany and West Yorkshire, ended with 23 years as head of languages at a comprehensive in North Iceman. All but five years of my 34-year career were spent in comprehensive schools. Even though some may have argued that my specialism, modern foreign languages, would have been better suited in a more selective system, I made a conscious choice and have no regrets. I still feel that it's wrong to select children at 11 to pursue different paths and was conscious of the general feeling amongst my contemporaries at primary school that failure at 11 plus was indeed failure. You can see what happens when you select here in Lincolnshire. No matter how you tart them up, no matter what you call them, county secondaries, academies, high schools, the schools that educate those who fail the 11 plus struggle to compete with the grammar schools in the eyes of many parents, students, and indeed many in the teaching service. They find it harder to recruit specialists and struggle for exam success. When I arrived in Lincoln in 1977, it was a comprehensive island in a sea of selection. The system had some teething problems, especially in the old city borough where middle schools had been introduced in 1973. But by the end of the decade, with most schools operating at 11 to 18, success as reflected by exam results was delivering in a way that the old system never did. With the help of a light touch education authority, schools throughout the county were encouraged to cooperate. Indeed, I helped to found an association of foreign languages teachers, which was instrumental in establishing courses for students and foreign languages assistants throughout the county. Where are they now? By the end of the 1980s, with the introduction of ground maintained schools and the national curriculum, not forgetting the new GCSE, things changed rapidly, indeed. All but one of Greater Lincoln's comprehensives successfully applied for GM status and benefited from a massive injection of cash. But still, that wasn't enough for some of the elected representatives. In 1992, the Conservative administration, that had been in power ever since Lincolnshire was founded in 1974, presumably for electoral advantage, tried to turn the only school that he had under its control into a grammar school. The reaction from the other schools in the area was swift and probably contributed towards the only time the Conservatives have so far been in opposition at county in the history of the Authority. Largely now, thanks to the bending of the rules established by the last Labour government, which nobody at the time saw fit to challenge, even Greater Lincoln now has a de facto grammar schools in its midst, which is able to cherry pick the best students from far wider area than its competitors. So much for a level playing field. I have to contain this because I realise there's not enough time for the rest of it. But just to say, as the former Education Secretary Nicky Morgan recently said, let's get the current reforms to work first, and that should include a review of vocational education before we try anything else. In the words of Fagan, my advice to Mrs May is, I think I'll have to think that out again. Thank you.
Councillor Chris Payne.
Not working. No green light, can you hear that? All right. It's been sabotaged. Right, I have to declare a personal interest in this because my son's just gained entry to Alpha Grammar School Quags. And one would think, after two weeks mounting homework, a total change of regime where every dinnertime he's working hard, you would think he'd be the first person in this room to, to demand that grammar schools are crushed, scrapped and abolished. He loves it. It's a different ethos. It's literally, go, go to school, they don't finish, they come home, homework and get on with it. Last night, I won't mention, but I went round at an academy that's had millions, more to millions of pounds thrown at it. It's the best all singing, all dancing school you could imagine. It makes the school that most of us in this room went to look out of the arc, but yet unfortunately, it does not compete on results. Alpha Grammar Schools had a fraction of the money, but it's got some of the most outstanding results in the county of grammar schools. And it's, it's about the fact that it's the ethos that the people go there, try to learn. A lot of the academies actually work on, on sets and selective streaming internally. You'll find a lot of academies have the top set or two sets, which actually are pushed forward and given that extra care, and the bottom sets are given extra tuition to bring them up to speed. So unfortunately, I disagree with the merits of this motion, but of course, I do disagree with Dave Cameron on quite a few things, but Brexit and other issues is pushed forward in the past, so you would, you would expect that of me. One of the main issues in schools, unfortunately, they've changed very much since we were all at school, is discipline. And it is the lack of discipline in some schools that is the issue. One of the children last night mentioned to me the fact, he's carried on at school at sixth form, but the reason he didn't do very well, he got in with the wrong crowd and he didn't actually try his hardest, he admits that, he could have tried a lot harder with his homework and his schoolwork and got on better. He's now turned himself around, got a new set of friends and trying. And unfortunately, that's the thing, a lot of times, there's nothing wrong with grammar school education. It gives some of the people from the poorest backgrounds the access to some really good education. There's, there's a lot of success stories across. The problem is, it's, it's one of these things. Comprehensives is not the answer. It's about education, quality schooling, but obviously the academy from last night proves the fact, but you can throw money at a school, it does not mean that school is better. And when you've got a grammar school that's got a significant less funding doing so well, it, it proves the point that they do do something right. So fortunately, I do support grammar schools, and even, even my son does after two weeks at the Quags. Thank you.
Councillor Redshaw.
Sorry, I think I've turned it off. Right, okay, I mean, I disagree with Chris's comments. I mean, as a teacher, obviously I've got a unique, a unique perspective. Most people in this room talk from the other perspective, which is a parent. And one can understand the instinct of wanting your child to go to a grammar school because it gives you an advantage, they, they think, because my child is in an exclusive situation, it's an elitist situation, it's going to do, do well in life. And of course, yes, they do, but that's presuming, of course, that if that child went to a comprehensive school, they wouldn't do as well. But the fact is that they, they do. I mean, the figures that have been mentioned by John Hoff and one or two others today are absolutely accurate, that quite frankly, you, you will do as well in a good comprehensive school as you will do in any grammar school in the country. All that grammar schools do is damage to the country as a whole. They actually damage our economy. So we've got to have two perspectives here. One, the parent, and understand that perspective. Yes, I want my child to go to a grammar school, I want him to be selected, but also a parent would want a child to go to a good school. And if the community leaders of this country and the government do their sums right because of the, all the evidence is there, it's clearly better for a child to go to comprehensive because they're not rejected and selected at 11. I mean, I can give you an analogy, my, my own story, I mean, Mr Dilks has given his. Mine was very similar. I came from a background on council estate, big family, very poor, relatively speaking. I wouldn't say we were deprived, certainly not free school meals, but we didn't have that educational background. My parents, dad was virtually illiterate, virtually, and my mum was certainly, you know, one of 15 kids where the, the mother was not expected to be educated at all, you know, they were the ones that were going to be in the home. So I came from that background, limited vocabulary, limited sort of speech patterns in the home to a school. And of course, I was at the bottom of the pile, relative speaking, although I was bright and I did pretty well, and I was entered my 11 plus. And everyone in my class, that's 29 of them, went to the grammar school and I didn't. I was selected for the GCE stream, which was a sort of a, the next stage down, which is a reject really, but top of the rejects, the local comprehensive. But let's make no mistake, they're not comprehensives, you're quite right. Secondary schools, comprehensives in Lincolnshire are secondary schools, but they're judged as comprehensives, which is crazy. So, so you've got a double whammy here. You know, you've not only got the second tier of rejects, which, you know, I was one of them, but you've also got this fighting against a regime which is unequal. So if we're going to have equality in this country, genuine equality, we've got to get rid of grammar schools and we shouldn't be creating more. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor, Mrs Jackie Brockway.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, this is very interesting because we've got three teachers here and I disagree completely. My, my background is that I taught in a variety of schools, different types, but my particular specialism was accelerated learning in a secondary modern. And it is very possible, my team and I regularly achieved 90 to 100% A stars to C with a number of the students going on to get first class honour degrees. And I'm very happy to give you detail of that. I agree with some of what you say, actually. I can have huge sympathy with some of the bits I don't agree with as well. But I, what I feel about this motion is it's very valid and we need to talk about it, but I think it's too soon because I don't think we really know what the government wants yet. Also, there's a situation here where the government has made it clear that the local area will choose what it wants. And I think it's very dubious for us to close the door now, when we haven't got all the facts, on potential choices that some of our parents might wish to make. To address some of the points made, I've been involved extensively in research with the examination boards over many years. And Phil has mentioned that academic students can excel whether they're selected at age 11 or not, as an academic elite, I noticed the word, that you're true, they can, but they don't always. And an ongoing study, which has been going on for 45 years with John Hopkins University in America, shows that the children at the very top actually do not progress as much. So the children who are in the top few percent do, but the very top don't. And it's when they are taken out and selected and given much more advanced training that they go on to become what the particular study refers to as the one percenters, and I'm happy to show you the papers. It's, it's a long-established study. Also, in this business, about the 12% of secondary student, of students, 3% at grammar schools, yes, 3% of grammar schools, but you need to remember that of the 12%, a number of those opt not to try for grammar school anywhere, so you're not comparing like with like there. What we have to do is very, remember that very bright children have special needs just as much as other children do. And I think the problem isn't one of choice, or I think it's harking back to a misunderstanding of elitism from the past. It may be that we just need to change the names, but I do not believe that one size fits all, and my research and my evidence as an academic and as a teacher supports my, my comments there. I think that certainly in Lincolnshire, there was huge evidence that children in the Lincolnshire secondary modern, some of which are superb beyond belief, were achieving and actually outperforming some of the children in some of the grammar schools. So what I would say is, this is a valid debate, but can we have it again when we've got more information and more data? I don't want to close the door yet, so I'm sorry, I can't support this at the moment.
Thank you, Chairman. I too will not be able to support this motion. I could actually support the first, first paragraph and the first little bit of the second paragraph, but I haven't put an amendment in in time, so I'm afraid I'll have to vote this out. I think the only comments I would make is that the, the motion's been very carefully written, but is a fact, where there is, where an area has general selective education, a lot of the schools are, the standards for all the pupils in those areas are better when we, and that is true, that is a fact, that is a, I'm sorry, that is a fact, I'm talking about across all the children in that area, the overall standards for all the children taken as average are better in selective areas and in non-selective. That is a fact. And people may say they don't believe it, but that is, I'm talking about the whole piece. I think we need to be realistic. All schools aren't equal, and I think already we've heard about where councillor Marriott said, well, you know, schools, status in Grantham, we already have a pecking order in schools in this country. Most schools actually select by stream anyway, so I struggle to understand what the difference is. When comprehensive came in, there was, all ability classes were the vogue at the time, which is an absolute disaster, and nearly every school in the country has actually moved away and is actually streaming children now. So I do think, why should we not give parents and governing bodies the choice as whether they can do have grammar schools elsewhere in the country? And I sympathise with councillor Dilks. I was quite moved by the, the treatment he received when, you know, it was perceived he didn't pass the 11 plus and went to a non-grammar school, that he was a failure. That's not a fault of the grammar system, that's a fault of the disgraceful treatment he was given by careers advisers and teachers. And I think for too long, those who haven't been grammar schools, there was an ethos earlier that even though some of the secondary moderns also regarded themselves as a failure, we've moved a lot on from that. And every, every school now, the idea is to bring children on and improve them. And I could point to areas in Lincolnshire, I can point to Bourne, where we have what used to be called the Robert Manning, we had a barren grammar school there and an excellent, an excellent non-grammar school. I could go to Sleaford, where we have grammar schools. St George's now academy in Sleaford, an excellent school. I think this debate is always a bit strange. It's always an argument about success or failure. The success is that every child has different abilities, every child has different aptitude, and the job of a good teacher at a good school is to magnify and improve those prospects for that child. Whether or not you pass the 11 plus is not really relevant to that argument, it's about having the good, having the child there to, to actually make the best of them and, and they don't have to feel they're a failure and they can go on in life and actually be a great success. So I can't support the motion, and I think some of it is a bit misleading in what it's said. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We've, we have got a full screen of people wishing to speak, so I am closing the, the list now. Councillor Bob McCauley.
Thank you, Chairman. I think there's quite a few issues in this debate. Firstly, the, the choice of freedom. You know, why, why should we deprive parents or children of the choice to go to a grammar school if they have the, if they have the ability to pass an entrance exam, the same as one passes an entrance exam to join the air force or any other organisation? And to use the words rejected or rejection of, of children that failed the 11 plus, I think it's disgraceful. I mean, I failed the 11 plus, I went to a secondary modern, we was given the opportunity at 13 to take it again. We didn't feel rejected or second class or have an issue or a problem with the few that went on to grammar school. We just appreciated that, hey, they had a little bit more grey matter and a little bit more ability to pass an exam. It's as simple as that, really. We went through, we went through. We went through, I left school at fifteen, and my other fellow friends in the school went on to be all sorts of people. I mean, one became an admiral in the Royal Navy, and there's sign writers, there's brick lads. You don't have to be necessarily wholly academic to get on in life. You accept what life is and you get on and you make the best of it. And to actually say that it is wrong for people that have got the ability to go further is counterproductive. And we should back anybody who has the ability to go further irrespective of whatever. And there's always a selection or a streaming type of process. I mean, a fellow councillor mentioned it this morning, look at the Olympics. How would we have gone on at the Olympics if they wasn't selected? They were selected on ability. It's no different. So stop knocking it, stop calling people that fail a rejection or a failure, because they're not. They're human beings, they have different abilities, you may be very brainy and very clever, not everybody is, so don't knock them, let them get on with their lives and enjoy it. Thank you.
Counselor Neve Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'm one of those that didn't get through the system at eleven. One thing I always remember about that process is you did an academic paper and then you went for an interview. And the thing that sticks in my mind was told to take badges off my blazer before you went for the interview. That was going to make a difference. Now, I went to a secondary school, one referred to by Phil, Central Bank, had its advantages, could train spot out the window when trains went on the high level line. And in those days before floodlights, we saw parts of Lincoln's matches when they played in the daytime. Didn't have an opportunity to get GCEs, that's what it was, didn't have the opportunity to get CSCs. I did, however, like Frank Spencer, get my twenty-five yard swimming certificate. Oddly with that, I managed to keep my head above water as I went through an apprenticeship, went to the college, gained some qualifications. I always knew education would come in useful. And one day, when I was working on a steam turbine that had broken down red hot, senior engineer stuck his head under and said, what we're doing? He was a great engineer, superb man-manager, and I said, I'm trying to work out the coefficient of friction on this bolt, mate. He said, in broad Anglo-Saxon, it's extremely tight, get it off, but when you have, there's a kettle waiting. Now, I can contrast my situation against a young woman I met from Germany, who told me that her example was that, in my terminology, she was a cabinet maker. Yeah, cabinet maker. She'd managed to get through higher education in Germany during her training, she'd been and applied for a course at Warwick. Her employer on exit interview said, why are you leaving? She said, why? I'll give you the first terms fee. She got a one from Warwick. And I always said, you know, what are you going to do? Without a shadow, she said, I'm going back to the company. I said, oh, it's contractual. No, no, they've been good to me, yeah, I'll go back. The one thing that sticks in my mind, though, was a parting shot that I had when I dropped her back at Grantham Station after a day with her, when she said, remember, I'm qualified cabinet maker, when you want to cough in, give me a ring. I've deferred that option, but still available.
Counselor, Mrs Patricia Brantwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, the debate this afternoon is quite interesting, and it doesn't surprise me that there are so many people who seem to be against grammar schools. I actually think what's got lost in some of this is parental choice. And as I said earlier, I think, you know, parents do want the opportunity to do what's right for their children. And I think with the range of schools that we've got, there is, you know, it's not one type of school fits all, so all pupils do have some sort of school that their parents will feel that is caters for their needs. I mean, this isn't just, I just don't think that just having a comprehensive school or a secondary school system is right. I agree with Bob, he's just been saying, I just don't think it's right that we should be saying to people, well, you can't have this. I think what we've got in Lincolnshire, it works. I have to say, I agree with Phil that actually, I don't think the inspection system's right. I don't think it's fair that Ofsted come in and just actually have one way of inspecting schools. I think there should be two, if you're going to inspect a grammar, you shouldn't do it on the same lines as what you're probably doing other schools. And I do think that needs addressing by the government. But I do believe that grammar schools are, they're offering a lot now to secondary schools. The majority of our grammar schools work with secondary schools, we've got a joint sixth form in Sleaford, Horn Castle Grammar works very closely with Barna Valam, Louth supports primary schools and has supported a secondary school, and Gainsborough's working with their secondary school. So they are all working together and sharing expertise, which never used to happen in the past. But I do believe that, I think grammar schools have something to offer in this county. I also believe that it depends how this is taken forward, it's got a long way to go at the moment, it has to get through the House. But I do believe if it is something that the government get through Parliament, then they do need to address the 11 plus system. I think the testing system is outdated and to ensure that lots of, any child can go and take the 11 plus and not have to have booster classes, it should change quite a lot so that anybody can go and take that test. Because at the moment, there is evidence to say you do need to have additional booster classes before you go and take it. So I believe there's things that we need to do, but I do basically believe in grammar school education, I think it fits in the county and it gives parents choice. And I believe, for me, that's a great thing, giving people the opportunity to choose what they want. Thank you.
Counselor Robert Parker.
This is the sort of debate that really does get people to think in terms of the way that probably they've always thought. Sorry, the people are speaking in the way that I get the impression that they've thought about this all their lives and have not shifted. And essentially, in Lincolnshire, it seems to me that we're a grammar school county. And we're going to stick as a grammar school county because that's what we know, that's what we expect, and that we recognise our place in society. And we might call it social mobility, but it comes down to class. And we want grammar schools for our doctors, dentists, middle-class people, we don't want our kids to go next to school next to people from the council estate, because their place in our society in Lincolnshire. Exactly. No, I'm, no, we want them, we want them to be separated. Nobody will admit to it and own up to it, but essentially, it's no different now to what it was when you've heard people speak about the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. It's just that people don't want to reveal that reactionary element that they have. Grammar school, county, proud of it, low skill, low wage economy, we know that, one of the poorest counties in the country, but we do nothing about engendering a spirit that brings about education for all. I mean, we just look at Lincoln, if we want to talk about details. We have LSST, which is for all intents and purposes, the primary school is a grammar school. Selectivity, difficult to get into, almost impossible, ninety-five per cent, five GCSEs A to C. The rest of the secondary schools in Lincoln get between forty and fifty per cent. Now, that could be considered to be pretty, pretty. Is it information, point of information?
Wrong information. A lot of the secondary schools in Lincolnshire get considerably higher than forty per cent, forty to fifty per cent. Lincoln.
Jackie, you said Lincoln.
Okay, thank you. So I refer you then to Christ's and the other schools there, who have frequently had much higher. Yes, LSST, who I can tell from personal experience includes children from weaker economic backgrounds. This is very, very improper, Chairman.
Too, Jackie, for that. But what I said precisely is LSST Priory gets about ninety to ninety-five per cent, the rest of the schools in Lincoln, Lincoln, okay, Lincoln, get between forty and fifty per cent. Right. That's essentially what I'm trying to say, that when you've got a highly selective educational system as we have in Lincoln, then essentially, that's what happens. I do come back, we pay lip service to social mobility. Let's be honest about it and recognise that the chances of, I'll use this as an example, somebody from a council estate, single parent, disadvantaged, probably on state benefit, or if not on state benefit, on a zero hour contract, their children, that person's child is not likely to be able to get to a grammar school under selectivity because by the time they take the 11 plus, okay, 11 plus, then the person who's from a middle-class background is going to be light years ahead when it comes to all of the social factors that help get into and get through an 11 plus. You can't eradicate that. The point that has to be made is that we've got to come out of this position of dyed-in-the-wall close-mindedness. You know, Gove did said, when Michael Gove said, we've had enough of experts, right? But I think that was completely wrong because the information that has been given here, seriously important information, Jackie. That actually shows that in selective areas, kids who are disadvantaged do worse than in non-selected areas. Now, is that the sort of Lincolnshire we want?
Counselor Rosie Kirk.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to read out, Sarah's not available today because she's got to go and see to her daughter's getting award, so I'm just going to read out a speech from Sarah. But just before that, quickly, I just wanted to talk about grammar schools. You talked about, Patricia said about comprehensives. Well, I know a system that works really well, fully comprehensive, it's in Finland. In the nineteen seventies, they had some of the worst performing schools in the world, so they changed, they became a fully comprehensive system. In fact, they don't have testing till sixteen, and now they're number one many times in the world. They have actually beaten China and Singapore at times. So that's a system that actually does work because they went fully comprehensive. I'm a product of comprehensive education, I went to university, got a degree, my children go to a comprehensive school, not a selective academically at eleven plus, my son's just come out with eleven A stars and my other son's going to King's College tomorrow, that's the product of comprehensive education. The reason I value comprehensive education is because it gives you a balanced approach towards life. It's not just about academic, it's about mixing with all different backgrounds of children, that's what it's about. It's not just the academic side to it. So that is why I believe in the comprehensive system. But I just want to read out quickly from Sarah, because Sarah's like me. I would like first to apologise to the council for missing the crucial debate on the issue so close to my heart. There are a few things that could keep me away from school today, and one of them is to celebrate my daughter's GCSE success at her school prize giving. Ironically, I'm not here now with you in the chamber because she has won three awards for academic excellence in philosophy, English literature and English language. She received A stars in all these subjects, she also achieved four As, two Bs and one C in other subjects. I am proud of her beyond measure, she worked like a Trojan, she deserves her success. But I am also immensely proud of her school, our secondary modern, Louth, Cordex Academy, like so many of our secondary moderns in Lincolnshire, they strive with all their passion to get the best out of all of their children. I dislike selection in education, not only because it is a form of social segregation, but because it's wholly unnecessary. My daughter's story proves that the most academically able can still achieve their full potential outside selective schools within a system that is fairer for the rest. In fact, many of my daughter's grades show that she has exceeded what was considered to be that potential. To my dying breath, I will never understand how they managed to drag B in mass out of her. The national picture is clear, in London, we see the best results in the country being achieved in areas of massive social deprivation in comprehensive systems. The government should be looking to follow their lead, that's what they should be doing, that what works and not hark back to a system that is not followed by any other successful education system in the world like Finland. And whatever we do as a council, we must kill at birth the idea that what schools need is a more structural reform, it is the last thing that they need or want. Our message as a council to government should be to leave the system alone and let leaders lead and teachers teach, get excellent teachers. As a result, children will learn, just one more line, politicians are becoming the enemies of education and teachers are adding off.
Comprehensive aren't as good as grammar. I'm not saying that. Young people come out from comprehensive schools and secondary schools with excellent examinations, I'm not saying that. I'm saying grammar schools, secondary schools, we can all have everything in Lincolnshire.
Counselor Judy Renshaw.
Two times in a day, that's unusual. Sorry, I'm sorry, Jen. I'm looking at this from the point of view of a mum as well as a councillor. When we lived in Boston, where I had my family, and at that time, and it still does, Boston had a grammar school and a secondary modern system, and the pupils were trained, and I underline the word trained, to pass the 11 plus. Now, I don't know whether that still goes on, I hope to goodness it doesn't, because I was a victim of that training. I passed the 11 plus, but when I got to the high school, well, the girls' grammar school, the high school as it's still called, of course, I failed because I could not keep up with the work. So after two years, I left because I just could not cope with the work. I hope that's still not going on because it mortified me, it mortified my family, and it took me a long, long time to get over that rejection. And it is rejection, whether you like it or not, it's utter rejection. Robin came home in nineteen seventy-three to say that in nineteen seventy-four, we were going to have to move to Lincoln. Horrified me that did because we lived in a very small community, I'd lived in Boston all of my life. It was a bit daunting having to move, family, change schools, all the usual things. However, one of the good things that came, of the many good things that came out of that move, was the fact that my children didn't have to sit that 11 plus, they went to good comprehensive schools and did fairly well. If they'd been brighter, they probably would have done better, but they had a good all-round education and have gone on to do fairly well. And I would hasten to add that LSST wasn't in existence then, so it was a level playing field, there were comprehensives. I mean, I still remember the day of the 11 plus, and that's over sixty years ago, the euphoria for some, including me, and the misery for others. I still remember the rejection and the misery that the girls and boys who failed their 11 plus felt. And I still see them today when I go back to Boston, which I do on a fairly regular basis. Cheryl Berry, when she was chairman, she was education officer in this county before I was a councillor, she said, every school should be a good school. If every school in this county was a good school, we wouldn't have to have selection. Counselor Payne commented on the ethos of Oxford Grammar School being very different to other schools. That is down to the leadership of the head and the staff inside it. I went to Castle Academy opening evening the other night and I was very impressed. It's a long time since I went round to a school because my children have, got children of their own now. The pupils and staff at that school are so proud of the ethos and the education that they give and receive. I'm just horrified that we're still subjecting our children to 11 plus exams.
Now, the other part of the combination, Counselor Robin Renshaw.
Thank you. Well, Judy eclipsed something I was going to say, we should, because we are not, that's it, we are not joined to the hip, despite what people say. I understand why some parents want their children to go to a grammar school. I went to a grammar school. With my parents, it was pure snob value, and that's what it boils down to, we're better than the rest of them down the street. Some parents choose to send children to what is perceived to be the best school based on the last Ofsted inspection, which might have been good, bad, indifferent, but the day the Ofsted is published, it's out of date, and possibly they go on neighbourhood chat or what's on Facebook and Twitter, not necessarily an informed decision. And as Judy said, I remember Cheryl Berry in this very chamber saying, every school a good school, and that's a good ethos. If we had that ethos as our role model for this county, then we wouldn't have the waste of money we're spending sending children across this city and across the county on wasted bus journeys, and also we could cut at the stroke the need for any more roadworks in Lincoln, which I'm sure would please everybody. Selection means rejection, and I can't agree with that. Thank you, Chairman.
Counselor Colin May.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, chairman. I come from the olden days. I was, I took my 11 plus when I was nine year old. Thanks to Mr Hurst, I was bored to death in the then junior school and just kicking up trouble, so he gave me some dummy test papers. I didn't realise at the time there was 11 plus dummy test papers, and I just worked through them. And he sat me in a corner, and I worked through them, he jumped me up a class, and then I took my 11 plus at nine and got through. Hemsworth Grammar School was a place where mostly children of mining families went. We were a truly working class community. We lived on council estates. We didn't feel stigmatised by it, didn't feel like successes or failures. In fact, I was shocked by the response of my parents, my mother crying because I passed my 11 plus. I didn't think it was a big deal at all, none of us did. But I got through the grammar school and went on with life and ended up with three lads who went to a comprehensive school in Selby. Now, I was all for grammar schools, they're the best. But my three lads at Brayton High School in Selby did okay. One got a degree, one got a PhD, and the other said to me one day, Dad, do I take up this full apprenticeship with British Aerospace or do I do my A levels? I said, you can do A levels anytime lad. And it was the best movie made. And he's doing great in America somewhere now, you know, building aeroplanes and things. And Brayton High School was one of those schools of excellence. It was a comprehensive, had the right leadership, and it taught the kids attitude as well as academy. And that's so important, we've missed out on that. And what all of that's taught me is that selection is a natural process in all fields of life. Selection is a natural process. And just because someone happens to be pretty good at something, that doesn't turn everybody else into failures. We've seen it with the Olympics and the Paralympics. I've seen it in my professional life, where some people sort of fade away and stay there, and they're happy. I mean, my oldest son taught me that. One day I said to him, you're doing nothing with your life. What do you want out of life? He said, I want to be happy. What can you say to that? And he's very happy, and he's a very senior director with experience, by the way, so he's got the best of all worlds. Oh, he's, he's done it. It was all his effort. And for those reasons, and for the reasons, I've still got 24 seconds. The, the Gartery High School in Coningsby was failing, and the parents made the selection. A lot of them said, my kid's not going there, and the standards went down and down and down. It became the worst of the secondary moderns, if you like, and worse than that because only the rich parents could send the kids and pay for them to go, bus them to Horn Castle. But now it's got a decent head, it's become an academy, it's still comprehensive, if you like, and academically, it's doing great. We've got so many choices nowadays that I can't support that motion, but I can't support what Theresa May said last month either. Thank you.
councillor, Mrs Sue Rawlings.
As everyone else is recounting their personal experiences, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about my, what my attitude is to grammar schools, and I do support grammar schools. And the reason for that is I started off, I failed my 11 plus. I went to the secondary modern school at Market Raisin, which was a fantastic school for me. I was then given the opportunity to take my 11 plus again at age 12, and I passed it, and I went to the Dastan Grammar School at Market Raisin. It was a grammar school for two years. I was the second intake of girls, which was an unusual experience for the male teachers there, who had never taught girls in their life before, apart from the year before me. And then the following year, the school went comprehensive, so I can successfully say I've experienced of all three options. I, I think that the grammar school ethos is, is good because it takes the, the best talents of those children who are quite academically motivated and gives them as many opportunities as available. But also, if you have good secondary education, or whatever you would like to call it, secondary schools or comprehensive schools or academies or whatever, it's the child that counts. And I think, I think as Rosie said from Sarah's input, it is the actual school and the head and the quality of the teaching at the school that's really important. But I don't, I think it's harking back to an age that's long gone to say that, so that if you, you know, if you, if you don't pass that exam, then you'll be a failure. I can't agree with that at all. Thank you.
And finally, councillor, Mrs Alison Austin.
I'm the last one, am I? I wrote down one statement, and interestingly, two people then went and said that. I just wrote down, one size doesn't fit all. Right, after the life stories, yeah, they hadn't expected me to pass the 11 plus, but at the age of 10, I did and went to Boston High School. I have been a teacher, and all my teaching has been in grammar schools. I taught a very academic subject, I taught maths. And certainly in Sleaford and Boston, where the bulk of my teaching was, I don't think the population was such that you could probably get the specialism in every single school. And I have no regrets that, you know, that I was teaching in an academic school because it allowed me to be teaching the upper, the A level that obviously was, you know, my, my main love. But equally, though, it's getting the foundations right as well. That 11 plus, I think some people obviously have very bad memories of it, to be honest. It's so long ago now, I can, you know, considerably more than 60 years that I can't, you know, remember much about it. But so much depends upon the stage of development of that particular child. And I was very, very immature at that age. But I've taught people for whom the grammar school was definitely the best school for them. Equally though, I have taught people for whom it was not the right school. My own children have been, I've had to move the schools, I'm not going to say where I moved them to or what, but because they weren't in the right schools. I think now, we've got to move on from the days of the 11 plus and failure. We have that parental choice, and the bulk of people in the county, they do have that choice. And I would hope that the, the public, that the parents of the future can be given enough information to guide them as to really what perhaps the most suitable school for their child is. I wouldn't want to say, no, we're not going to have grammar schools. But equally, I wouldn't want to say, every child has to go to that particular comprehensive. Let's keep our choice. I'm not sure that I want us definitely to have to make more grammar schools, but don't let's say we can't make grammar schools if more are required. Thank you.
councillor Phil Dilks, would you like to sum up, please?
It's been a good debate. I mean, I welcome the debate from all sides, frankly. It's obviously a very emotive subject for many of us, for most of us perhaps, and we've all got personal stories. Just a couple of things I want to say, though, you know, this thing about ethos, a grammar school ethos, and it really annoys me to hear about this grammar school ethos. You know what? Deepings Comp has got a good ethos, and a lot of comprehensives have got. Ethos in schools is about leadership. Thank you, Jackie. It's, it's about good head teachers, first of all, but it's about good teaching. And, and it is about discipline in school and ethos and making kids realise, yeah, you've got to cut your head down and do some work like Badger Bill over here, his son, you know. Sorry, I don't, I didn't mean no disrespect. But this thing also about results, people sit down and say, you know what, grammars get good results. Well, that's about, you know, if I run a business and I could choose my own customers, which is what grammar schools do, of course, I'm going to get the best results. You know, in the Deepings, it's a, it's a, we're in a comprehensive, we've got a comprehensive school, but we still get a few kids creamed off at 11 plus to go to Bourne Grammar. Now, okay, you can say that's parental choice and all, but our results then are clearly diminished because, you know, those are going to go into Bourne's results, not ours. No, of course, it's not their fault, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sort of saying it is. And, you know, as for your remarks, you know, about, whoa, you know, leave it alone, don't knock it, I'm not, I'm not having a go at excellence. We all applaud excellence, what Sarah's kids have done in a secondary modern school, you know, fantastic. You mentioned a chap in your school, a secondary modern school, who'd become an admiral. Well, you've got to say something's wrong with the education system if, 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 you know, we're getting kids as admirals who failed their 11 plus, you know, what's gone? We're clearly selecting them too early at that. I, I do welcome what our teachers said, particularly councillor Marriott, who, you know, I do respect, and councillor Shaw, the best speech you've ever given I've heard in this chamber, thank you. Basically saying, and you're right, we didn't discuss the economy, but grammar schools do, as Reg said, damage the economy. Why is it we've got the lowest, the lowest paid workforce in the country, as well as the lowest skilled workforce in the country? There's, there's a correlation there. Yeah, you can shout. Or look, all I'd say, Martin, you, you ought to go about, or colleagues ought to go about schools, you know, we need grammar school. All I'd say to you is, and I think it was you that said, we outperform, we do well, you know, across the board. I know it's time, last sentence, but across the board. But what I'd say to you is Tower Hamlets, and I'd say London. London 20 years ago had the worst schools in the country, under labour authorities mainly, and it's been addressed, we now have the best ones in the country. Resources was a lot to do with it, and leadership in schools was. But, you know, look at some of these boroughs where, you know, we've got the lowest, yeah, you know, we've got low, poor families getting good results in comprehensives. Thanks, chairman, sorry I've gone on.
I think that was a sentence. Well, there was very little punctuation in it. I won't let councillor Marriott loose on it. Right. Right. All, all those in favour of the motion, please show. Okay. All those against? Okay. Any abstentions? Okay. Not even in a handcart. That was defeated. Right, we go on to the third motion, and there is an alternative motion put in by the Lincolnshire Independents, which is on a white sheet of paper that everybody should have in front of them, and not on the order of proceedings. It is down to the council whether you accept this alternative motion. It is very similar to the first one, but it is an alternative. You should have all had, had it. Right, has it, has it? You haven't got one. But it is up to the council whether they accept it or not. Yeah. Go.
Can I just ask, for, I understand that this is not an amendment, and I understand it's an alteration. So before we go any further, can either the chief executive or Nigel West explain the difference between an amendment and an alteration so that everybody is clear what happens from here on in?
Well, if it were an amendment, you, the, the motion would remain as printed in your order paper, and the amendment would be proposed to take its place, and a debate would take place accordingly. This is an alternative, which is asking the council to not consider that which appears in your order paper, but to consider this instead as a replacement motion. So that is, that is the substantial difference. It is, it is a different motion from the one which you were advised before. And I understand councillor Mrs Owen will tell you that is because additional information came her way after she prepared the first motion.
Mister Chairman, are you?
Motion.
If this one is not accepted, then we stick with the original one, which was properly put in by the due time, which people could do, but I'm going to immediately amend it to this one that's on the sheet. Thank you.
So. Do the council accept this as an alternative motion? Let's have a show of hands. Those who do. Those who do not. Any abstentions? The council does not, does not accept this as an alternative motion. So we go to the motion on, in the order of proceedings. Correct. Right, councillor Mrs Overton.
On the officer, do I amend this immediately, or does it need to be somebody else who does it?
We, we know exactly where we normally are, which is that eight.
Going around in circles.
And I didn't say that. Where we ordinarily are in terms of how we conduct our business, which is that there is a motion before you. Councillor Mrs Overton will propose the motion, has to propose the motion before anything else happens. That then needs to be seconded, and it is then for, for someone else who wishes to do so, to propose an amendment.
Put in late, and I thought we got to the stage where we agreed yesterday that the best way forward is any amendments should be presented to you as chairman of the council before the meeting starts. You know, I would have liked to have amended councillor Dilks's motion, but I was too late, so I had to accept where I was. So I do think, I'm not, where we go from here, but we do need to get away from this idea, we just keep amending things because we, we think things have changed. So I'm, I'm not, I don't think we need to go to the, go to have a big row about this, but it is silly that all the time we get to late amendments on the hoof, and it just is not good, it is not good for good procedure.
Yeah. It was, it was said yesterday, and it has been said before, that any alternative motions or anything have to be in before the beginning of the meeting. So we go on the motion as is. Councillor Palmer.
Advice from the chief executive. Does something agreed in leaders' meetings supersede the constitution?
Chairman, no, it doesn't, and nothing that's been proposed here supersedes the constitution. However, the leaders' meeting is a method of making sure that business runs smoothly, and on the basis of the things that are agreed there, there must be an informal but genuine expectation amongst members that that is what will be then adhered to. It doesn't supersede the constitution. The constitution is exactly where you are at the moment, you have a motion before you. It isn't the alternative that councillor Mrs Overton proposed. It is the motion before you, and you can now debate it in the normal way and do whatever the constitution allows you to do with it. way and do what the constitution allows you to do with it.
Councillor Hoff.
Martin is right, I mean, we discussed this at some length, and we've been subject in previous council meetings to bits of paper being circulated around at the last minute, which makes it very difficult for us as members to actually consider what should or should not be considered as the motion. That was the reason that we put our amendments down on the order paper. And I think, I mean, I, in terms of the merits of this one, I don't quite understand why it's being changed, because basically, the motion is exactly the same, it's only the proposal at the end that appears to have been changed. And I don't know whether some information's come through today, since the meeting started, when, okay, in that case then we might consider it as an emergency. But in general, I think we agreed, and I think it's right, that we should get amendments in before the meeting starts at half past term.
That this one is not an amendment, it is an alternative motion. I know it's being slightly pedantic and picking on words, but I'm afraid that's what the constitution is. Yeah? Hang on.
Sorry, I think Christine was probably first.
Operation, and seeing as we've been working well together thus far, for those who follow the health agenda, yesterday, a paper was issued by NHS England and NHS Improvement called Engaging Local People: A Guide for Local Areas Developing Sustainability and Transformation Plans, which was jointly published with four other organisations. This guidance is targeted at those developing local transformation plans and how they can engage with their local communities. Now, as I understand it, the STP, before it could ever be published in its entirety, had to go to NHS England to be signed off, and to the Clinical Senate to be signed off, before they could actually issue it publicly for consultation. So I'm just saying, I think it's, I will be saying this if we ever get on to debate it, I think it's inappropriate that we should be discussing this motion today, when coincidentally yesterday, Simon Stephen et al issued this new guidance about consultation.
Thank you, chairman. I mean, it's just, actually, what the chief executive said seems very sensible, we've got a motion, we need it to be proposed and seconded. It would then seem to be, and despite, I understand what the leader of the council and the leader of the opposition have said, about that we don't want pieces of paper floating about, I understand that, but it would, in any motion, be open to anyone else other than the proposer, as I understand it, to amend, verbally amend it here and now. So we're going to get to a place, I would have thought, that, and we might as well just get to it now.
Thank you. It was exactly the release of the document that we'd been calling for, which meant that our motion needed to be altered. The point that we were getting at is that these sustainability transformation plans are huge. They are a way of getting health and social care combined, and it's a way of making the NHS and care financially sustainable in the future. Now, that means that there could be significant reductions in the services. There has been, I think, good consultation from the point of view of the process. I did see it coming through health scrutiny and through health and wellbeing boards. Yes, this is a process, this is the guidance that the government has put out, this is what a sustainability plan is, this is what the job is, that has been properly shared. Those plans have then been drawn up by the NHS and submitted to the NHS, and we have not been part of that. And yet, these plans are about health and care, which is very much our area. In some council areas, there have been a round table approach, where health and the councils have been sitting together around the table. That's what has happened in some other councils, to create this plan. But I don't feel that I know enough about what's in that plan at this stage, when it has already been submitted from Lincolnshire to NHS England. We've not been part of shaping that, and we would like to contribute, because we feel we have really useful things to offer. And I think the public need to be engaged as well. And that's why I think it was just useful to raise the profile of this issue. And I'm now going to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, yeah. Just to clarify, councillor Mrs Overton, you are withdrawing motion? Yeah, yes, right. So, so that's that. No, she's withdrawn it. If the proposer withdraws it, as I understand the constitution, hang on, it is appearing again. It's probably best used as a doorstop.
So it can be withdrawn, but it requires the council's consent to withdraw it.
Oh, it needs the council's consent to withdraw it. Right. All those in favour that the motion is withdrawn? Right, that, all those against? Any abstaining? What? That is carried, the motion is withdrawn. Yes, councillor Mrs Talbot?
I accept what, what we've just agreed to, but at the end of the day, remember, we were reminded this morning that this has been webcast, so Mrs Overton had the opportunity to put her case, and even though we were going to discuss it, she's now withdrawn it. And I have to say that some of the points that she's made in the paper are not factually
Right, that is sorted out. We're on to the conclusion of the meeting. There is two things I want to say. The 20th October meeting, don't forget, it's a Thursday. The councillors will have to make their own lunch arrangements, there will be no, there will be no lunch provided by the council. All right? Right, councillor, councillor Mrs Austin.
Point of order, chairman, I was not sure what you said, but it sounds, sounded to me like using something as a doorstop, and if that was referring to this particular motion, then that is not really respect for another councillor, which...
...shape folder.
Right, well, I didn't hear you...
Actually councillor Dilks will back me up on that one.
Fair enough, chairman.
So I've got cross-party support.
I didn't hear you.
Right. The other thing is, is that, for those unobservant among you, the new, the proposed new divisions for Lincolnshire County Council after May 2017 are outside with all the names on them. If you've missed them, I don't know how. Right, we are, that concludes the meeting. As usual, will you clear your pigeonholes, please?